Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, April 7, 2022 Kent County Public Schools Board of Education Open Session Meeting. The first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda. The administration is recommending the approval of the agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion by Dr. Costa. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. The next item is moving to closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members, this board, Dr. Karen Couch, the superintendent, Mr. Dan Hushen, supervisor of human resources, Gail Manley, executive assistant to the superintendent, and Adam Constas from PK Law, our attorney, will move to closed session under general provisions Article 3-305b to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction as well as any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Section 7 to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice, and section 9 to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to those negotiations. Do we have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. McGee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. We will return back to open session at approximately 6:30. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the April 7th, 2022 Kent County Public School Board of Education Open Session. The first item on the agenda after the closed session is to report on that closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members of this board, Dr. Karen Couch, the superintendent, Mr. Dan Hushen, Supervisor of Human Resources, and Gail Manley, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, as well as Adam Constas from PK Law, Legal, Attorney, met in closed session under General Provisions Article 3-305B to discuss the appointment, employment assignment, promotion, discipline demotion, compensation removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction as well as any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Section 7 to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice, Section 9 to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to those negotiations. This session was for information and discussion purposes only, no action was taken. Personnel actions will be voted upon by this board directly after the superintendent's report. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Buckle, would you kindly lead us?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the March 14th, 2022 open session meeting. Do we have a motion to approve these minutes as presented, which is the recommendation of administration?
I move that we approve the minutes from the March meeting.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments or questions before I call the vote? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. The minutes are approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is the Golden Anchor Award in the superintendent's report portion of the evening.
Thank you, President Kent, school board members, Dr. Couch. I am up here to honor our Golden Anchor Award winners for April. As a reminder, the Golden Anchor Award is presented to an employee or group of employees that exemplify the mission and vision of our school system. As I stated back in March, we have changed up our nomination process to give, you know, our staff, students, and others more access. And I'm very proud to announce that this month we had 25 nominations that came in. And it was just very, very nice to see that everyone is noticing the good and great work that all of our staff are doing. This evening, tonight, we're going to recognize two staff. The first, I'm going to share some comments. This staff member advocates for her students and guides them every step of the way through their education. The students admire her energy and encouragement as they push through struggles and break barriers of their subject content. She is not only dependable with the students, but also with staff. She is a great role model for me and how building student relationships and experimenting with different types of learning can better the learning environments for all students. She equips students with the skills to be successful through their school, career, and life. She advocates for her students and encourages them to advocate for themselves and do their best way, whatever that may be. She does her best to make education equitable, to provide students with what they need in order to be successful, whatever that may be. She also collaborates with her peers in order to provide the very best possibilities and instruction for the students she works with. Our first award winner is Ms. Delia Shogay, Special Education Teacher from Kent County Middle School, who is in attendance with her husband Sam Shogay. All right, and our second honorary this month is an employee at Kent County High School. She is a great role model for her kids. She wears her passion for her job on her sleeve as well as in her heart. She always has the best intentions. Social work is hard with teenagers. She makes it extremely simple. She deserves all the recognition she can get for all the hard work in these tough times in the world and in school. From a student, I feel like she really wants to be a change for our school system, and she is doing just exactly that. Our second golden anchor for April is Ms. Courtney Miller.
Thank you, and congratulations to both of the Golden Anchor Award winners. We appreciate all that you do for the students of Kent County. Okay, Dr. Couch.
The next item is a presentation by our maker space, Mr. Poor. You brought some students with you. The next item is a presentation by our Makerspace, Mr. Poor. You brought some students with you?
Good evening, President Getz, members of the board, and Dr. Couch. Tonight, I wanted to give you a brief overview of our Makerspace, Hackerspace, and Hackerspace Junior offerings that we had this year. And then after that, I'm going to turn it over to some friends that I have that I brought from the high school to talk about some projects that they're currently working on. Before I begin, I would like to thank the Rotary Club and the McIntosh family for their continued support and donations for the Makerspace. Dr. Couch will discuss that a little bit later. I'd also like to congratulate Sam Paragoy, who's here with us tonight, along with Christopher Hinton and Eddie Blevins. They competed last week in the Salisbury University Eastern Shore Computer Programming Competition, and as a team, they placed second. And Christopher actually finished third in individuals, which was really awesome. There were some very large schools there with some very well-established programs, and these guys did exceedingly well. So, real quick, I just want to look at what the offerings are and then the total enrollment. So, it looks a little bit different at every grade level. So, Hackerspace Junior is targeted towards second and third grade, or I'm sorry, is targeted towards third and fourth grade, and that's offered two to three times per year in multiple sessions. Hackerspace, which is graduating from Hackerspace Junior, is targeted towards fourth and fifth, and also sixth and eighth, and also has multiple sessions that are offered year-round. The Makerspace at the high school, which is for ninth to 12th graders, that's actually an ongoing weekly club that meets every week, and that runs from the start of the year till the end. So, this year, actually currently, as of last week, our total enrollment was 172 students, which, if you remember, pre-COVID, we were hovering just above 100 students. We've actually seen some really good growth coming back from COVID, which was nice because we lost a lot of students last year, and especially at the beginning of the year, we were a little slow to start. So, at Hackerspace Junior this year, this is some pictures from all of the schools. So, all of the schools participate. They completed projects such as programming with Tinker, paper circuits, lava lamps, and kaleidoscopes. Those are the little guys. They're a lot of fun. Hackerspace, which was also at all of the elementary schools, they completed a turkey paper craft for Thanksgiving, a snowman paper circuit for Christmas, a lava lamp, and they also practiced programming with Tinker, which is new to us this year. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Sam, and then Jessica will follow him. They are both current Makerspace makers at the high school, and they're going to talk a little bit about some of the projects they've been working on this year and where we sort of hope to take Makerspace moving forward.
So, this year, I have been working on a ton of projects. And one of them includes a Minecraft server for the Makerspace because I thought it was a cool idea. And Mr. Poor had a couple of extra unused servers that were rather old. So, we've been using them, and we actually, we put the server rack that you see in the picture into the computer lab at the high school. And we had to do a data drop to it, which is phishing Ethernet through the ceiling in order to give it a connection. We also had a couple of network switches which we installed. And then, on the server, we're running Proxmox, which is a free Type 1 hypervisor, which will allow us to run virtual machines on the hardware multiple. So, it's like running multiple different operating systems on a single computer without having to reboot the computer to select a different operating system. It also allows us to migrate from older backups. If we, for example, have an issue with a new, if we update something and it has an issue, we can just restore it to an older backup. And that's an ongoing project. But we've also been working on a Nintendo Switch clone, which uses a Raspberry Pi at its core to run games. We started by prototyping it, and there was actually this really neat design that came up from, I think it was Tinkercad, which is a free online place for 3D models. And we originally tried printing it with an FDM printer, which gave reasonable quality. But we decided to print it with a resin printer again, which gave amazing quality. The dimensions of this were slightly off, though, so we're sticking with the FDM printer, which has more layer lines than the resin, but it will be overall better. It uses a Raspberry Pi, so a small, single-boarded computer, to run the operating system. And it is running, currently, it's running an operating system called RetroPi, which allows us to run emulated games from, I don't actually know how old it goes back, but it goes back really far. It can run almost anything that there is an emulator for, as long as it's not too new, because those are too resource-demanding. And then it uses a small seven-inch touchscreen. And for power, it has a small battery pack on it. Currently, we are working on getting the controllers to properly sync with the Raspberry Pi, as that has been an issue. We're going to try to use a different operating system for it because we have done a little research on it, and it turns out that RetroPi isn't always the best with controller support. But yeah, we're still working on that.
How long did it take you to 3D print that?
Um, I don't actually know. I would guess a couple of hours.
Yeah, I think that one was eight or nine hours, Sam.
Wow.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And then up next, we have Jessica Rosenova, who's going to talk about some of her projects. One of her projects that she actually brought, we couldn't get working before we started, but we have a little video of it actually working, and she'll kind of walk you through that.
Good evening. Good evening. Like Mr. Poor said, I'm, thank you. Like Mr. Poor said, my name's Jessica Rosenova. I'm in 10th grade. And I've been working on a couple of projects and the Makerspace program. One of the first projects that I would like to show to you is the Volterra V1, which is this big one right here. That machine will create PCBs, which are printable circuit boards. So, you can create any type of circuit board that you would want based off of the compatibility that the software you would program the Volterra to print. So... Sorry about that. I was going to show you a printed circuit board that I did not too long ago. So, yeah, very cool. The next one is a Bitcoin stock ticker. I was able to program that into displaying current and live Bitcoin prices out of a website.
Nice.
Yeah, that was... So, yeah, fortunately, I wasn't able to make it work today, but I got a video showing what it did. And so, out of that, it was made out of a Raspberry Pi 3, which Sam also mentioned. It was like a mini-computer. I also used a programming software called Python. I was able to code that into the software, and I actually have a copy of the code here. So, yeah, I programmed that in Python 3. I also used an LED matrix, which is where I actually displayed the price of Bitcoin, and just some simple wiring. Also, right, this, just a simple storage crate. But what I learned through making this is just simple wooden machinery. I didn't know at the time, so being in Makerspace allowed me to learn new things about machinery, playing with wood. I've never worked with wood before, ever. And so, the handles on the side, I actually designed and programmed a computer-based wood cutter and made this design, so it would be as the handle. And the rest, I just, I learned how to correctly apply the wood stain, wood finisher, wood glue, you know, all that, the components that you would generally use. And my future Makerspace projects is that we're using the Volterra here. I'm hoping that I would make my own circuit boards. Like, I could grab a picture off of Google and trace the outline of the circuitry and print it on the Volterra. I would also like to program a fun little game. I don't know if anyone has heard it, but it's called Wordle. Just a little game that I like to program. It's a little complex, but, you know, with Mr. Poor's help and the rest of Makerspace, that wouldn't be an issue. And just simply advancing my own knowledge and mastering the Python language.
You said you have already made a circuit board on the Volterra. What does that circuit board do? The one that you've created?
It's just like a simple, it's a circuit that just, I don't know how to explain it.
You have the 9-volt one and you have the makey-makey one?
Yes. Yeah, okay, so I have a makey-makey one, which is a personalized circuit that where you would attach four wires onto anything you want. And when you touch that object, it will make a sound. So, I have that printed, but I don't, unfortunately, I don't have it here today. And the other was just a 9-volt circuitry where you just plug into a battery.
To complete the circuit. Very cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, we actually have some things that we printed in the Makerspace to bring up to the board members. And for anyone in the audience, there's actually a cardboard box on the back table. So, we've printed a couple hundred different wooden Kent County luggage tags. You guys are free to take one or as many as you like. We've got plenty. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Poor, before you leave, could you speak a little bit about how the students come up with these ideas and in terms of how the program is working at the high school?
Yeah, so it's actually very different between the elementary, the middle, and the high. So, elementary and middle, we come up with a project, typically a project that takes three to four weeks, and then we execute that with the kids, walking them through the steps. We kind of do it together. High school is very different. It's sort of set up as an open lab space. Kids come in with their own ideas. They say, hey, you know, I've always wanted to really make one of these, or I've always wanted to really try this. And then we work together to figure out how to make that end product. For example, Sam, Sam's always loved servers and hacking, hopefully white hat hacking. So, we sort of, like, we took that and we said, well, what can we do? So, we rummaged through some old closets, and we found some servers, and, you know, we decided, what can we do with these? So, we started with a Minecraft server, and it just kind of grew from there. And one of my favorite things about the high school Makerspace is actually the Bitcoin tracker that Jessica made. I was not involved in that at all. And Jess actually sought out Sam to help with some of the Python coding, because Sam is like a guru when it comes to Python. And they actually completed that together, working through some steps. They ran into some trouble getting the Python code to execute on boot. So, they worked through that, and it was really cool to see that collaboration, and that happens all the time. We have one student right now who is taking a bike and is turning it into an electric bike. That's Ariana Sharma. That's a really cool project. And then we actually have Benjamin Lawler approach me last week about bringing coding to middle school students. So, next year, what we would like to actually do is combine the middle school program with the high school program and potentially bus the students to the high school because we have the space, and most of our large machinery that we use in Makerspace is located at the high school. So, they would be able to take advantage of all the space and the equipment that we have.
And then just one final thing. Just talk a little bit about what was available at Salisbury in terms of what we have available versus what they had.
Yeah, so it was actually pretty cool to see. So, when we traveled to Salisbury for the competition, while the students were competing, the coaches actually got to go tour Salisbury's Makerspace. And I was actually really surprised. We have a fairly large Makerspace, and we've actually, over the years, accumulated a significant number of equipment. They had two 3D printers and a button maker, and then they had various labs for, you know, iPad stations and things like that. But it was much smaller than I had anticipated, being a university. We've actually just sort of delved into the realm of resin 3D printer, printing. So, we have, currently, we have three resin printers, and I think we're up to like eight FDM printers. So, we're actually amassing quite a collection, which is nice because then they're not tied up when students are printing, because oftentimes, a lot of them want to print things, but they take so long that that can become an issue.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You both also for joining us. Appreciate it.
Dr. Couch.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the board. I have a few things that I would like to report, the first of which is the First Lady's Fine Arts Spring Gallery in Annapolis. We had three of our students who had their artwork displayed at the art show. The matting was done by Finishing Touch, Caleb Tingle, Olivia Blusk. Their teacher is Janet McCormick at Kent County Middle School. They had their artwork shown at the Spring Gallery. And then one of our students, who is a second-grade student at Garnett, her name is Charlotte Conover. Her teacher is Amy Boumier. She received the highest score in the elementary school competition and will be receiving a $50 gift card and a governor's citation and a trophy. So, she really did very well, and I would like to just give them a round of applause. What we would like to do is, when they get their artwork back from the art show, we'd like to invite them to come to the board meeting so they can share their artwork with the board. The learning walks have begun. We had learning walks in the fall. We've begun our spring learning walks, and the principals are working diligently with their staff to provide additional support and updated interventions, and so it's been really nice. We've gone to three of the five schools so far. And they have, we've been very impressed with their focus and adjustment to their schedules and trying to work very hard in terms of the mid-year data that we shared with you at the last board meeting. The Interagency Commission on School Construction, which is the IAC, they contacted us last week, and they will be visiting us on May 6. they contacted us last week, and they will be visiting us on May the 6th. Their purpose is to visit the facilities at Kent County High School and Kent County Middle School, so that they can help better understand what the project will be. I know that as we move forward, we have to have the support of the state in order to move forward with the Kent County Middle School project. So for them to come and take an interest in the project, I think is, is very positive on our behalf. And I think we'll have more information to share with the county commissioners and also with the school board as soon as that visit is complete. I attended the Character Counts Award Ceremony last night, and I have to say that I was very impressed with our students. Overall, the students in the high school, we almost had a clean sweep. I have a copy of the program. And in ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade, Kent County High School students were the ones that took first, second, and third place, with the exception of one student from the Christian Academy in the ninth grade. So I thought that that was, that the students did a very good job. The elementary school winners, we also did very well. And I was very impressed that our students were recognized for the overall achievement. In the elementary, it was Jaden Gillis, who is a second-grade student at Garnett. He was the overall winner in the elementary category. And in the high school category, Ezra Kyle was recognized for the, the top award. So I think we almost, we almost had a clean sweep in the high school, and I think our students did a really nice job. Budget hearing, I wanted to talk to you about this when we get a time to talk about the budget. But we need to schedule a budget hearing. And initially, we identified the 25th as the date for the budget hearing, but that is the day that we're going to be recognizing our Teachers of the Year and our Support Staff of the Year. So I would like for you to check your calendars to see if we can have the meeting on the 28th of April, which is a Thursday, or May the 2nd. We do have a CAC meeting on the 2nd of May, but we could certainly have the, the budget hearing right after that. So be thinking about that, and we'll talk about that when we get to the budget. Testing. We completed the MESA testing, which is the science testing for grades five and eight. That has already been completed. And we start MCAP testing right after spring break. We will start MCAP, and we should be completed with the testing the first part of May. And then we will be moving straight into MAP testing, which we will begin sometime towards the end of May and be done, I think, the first week of June. So that's the plan. The last thing that I wanted to report is the school safety presentation. I know that Ms. McGee asked about that at the last board meeting, and Mr. Hamlin is going to be presenting some information on school safety at the May board meeting. Before I turn it back over to Mr. Getz, I do have a statement I'd like to read. "In recent months, it's been clear that community members are attending our board meetings with personal agendas. Their purpose during public comment has been to discredit me, discredit this board, and discredit staff who are working tirelessly to make a difference in our schools. While constructive criticism is welcome, personal attacks do not help our students, our staff, nor do they help out our community. We should be concerned about this behavior. It is my hope that in the future, public comments will be absent of personal attacks and focus instead on the mission of education and our shared goal of creating a quality learning environment for students and working environment for staff in the Kent County Public Schools. We welcome public input on how to meet the many challenges that we face. If instead people view these meetings as merely an opportunity to launch personal attacks, then it is my hope that the board will take action to address the public comment period, so that we can all benefit from those who have meaningful input for the success of the Kent County Public Schools and its students. We should learn to be civil to one another. At the March Board Meeting, we acknowledge positive gains in academic performance. I wholeheartedly support and acknowledge the hard work of our teachers and our staff for recent improvements. Of course, there's always going to be room for more improvement. I understand firsthand that in a very small school system, we face many challenges. When we have real challenges to address and many successes to be proud of, taking up valuable time at board meetings to launch personal attacks serves no public good. Our staff and teachers are working tirelessly to make a difference in our school system. Let me end by stating that I stand in support of the teachers and the support staff in the Kent County Public Schools, who have dedicated their careers to the service of children and families in Kent County. I stand in support of the Kent County Public School Administration and the school principals, who humbly lead this school system with the goal of making a difference in our community and in our schools. I will continue to support this board, who volunteers much of their time to lead, because they care about this community, our students, and our staff. Kent County Public Schools is not perfect, and we continue to make adjustments and strategize in order to improve our outcomes. We know that we have room to grow. I am proud of the work we are doing in the Kent County Public Schools and the progress that we've made in improving the school system. The community should be supporting the school system and the employees, who are working tirelessly to make a difference. We are, and we should be, on the same team. Thank you."
Thank you, Dr. Couch. The next item on the agenda is the Personnel Actions. Mr. Hushin.
Thank you, President Getz, Dr. Couch, school board members. Each month, the board receives a report of stated personnel actions. These personnel actions are discussed in closed session and then voted upon during open session. The administration seeks approval of those stated personnel actions.
As Mr. Hushin has stated, the administration is recommending approval of these stated personnel actions. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'll move that we approve the personnel.
We have a motion by Ms. McGee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Hushin. Appreciate it. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public participation. Before we ask the participants to come to the front, Ms. Gale, if you would be kind enough to bring that forward to me. I just would like to review the rules for public participation. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comments and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or processed through available channels. If submitting written testimony, speakers are requested to provide a copy to the president. Please remember that this is an opportunity for the community to address their comments to the board. It is not an opportunity for dialogue. If you have any questions that need an answer, please contact the superintendent or write a letter to the Board of Education, and a response will be sent back to you. I have the cards in my hand. Before we move forward, we are going to honor the three-minute rule on public participation. At 30 minutes, I will advise you that you have 30 minutes left.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, 30-second notice, that we have, that you have 30 seconds left. And if you could finish your thought, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Ms. Gale. Okay, the first person is Samantha Blanco.
Good evening, good evening, board members, good evening. Good evening, board members, good evening, Dr. Couch, good evening, President, Mr. Joe Getz. For many in this room and online, I want you to please hear me out. We have come to stand in front of you, leaders of this district, to express the concerns that my peer classmates, my family members, and our Latino population have been muttering in our community due to the circumstances along with other obstacles that our small Latino population faces. I have noticed that mothers, fathers, sisters, alumni, teachers, classmates, and community members are afraid to speak up on behalf to represent a very humble population. The only mentor support that I had, and many of us Spanish students had left the community... I had, wait. The only mentor support that I had, and many of us Spanish students had left the county without an explanation to give us students, to my family members and to the Latino community. This person resigned, and until this day, our Latino community feel very sad of this decision.
Thank you. The next speaker, Cecilia, is that? Are you Cecilia?
We're reading it together.
Okay. Is Cecilia Velazquez in the audience?
Yes, we're all together.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just want for, for record. Thank you so much.
As a citizen that I am of a small community, I stand up formally for you to know that us Hispanic students, as labeled as ESOL students, are forgotten. All of our obstances that we face, such as emotionally and academically, have brushed under the rug, and we are completely ignored. I have an IEP as a sophomore. My teacher have goals for me to meet. However, like I said before, I will repeat it again. I do not have support from my ESOL teacher, and when she is, the force is somewhere else besides my, of the academic needs of my classmates. With time, I have learned to do things on my own, because I feel that I do not have the support from other professors, other professors at the school. Our ESOL, ESOL teacher, who does not speak Spanish, asks one of us to translate my classmates, who do not speak English, which makes us feel uncomfortable for the first time. My family and other parents and students felt like home. When there was a translator for the school, but for no reason given that was unexpected in our community, we feel lost again. Without, without the person, my closest friend, classmates, who have been through a lot, back in their country and look for American dream and search for the best education, and they arrived to Kent County High School, where there are no resources there were again. Where ESOL students are the solution to those students, because we do, we do not have the support from guidance counselors and some of the, some teachers.
Living in Kent County, I have felt and witnessed that us ESOL children are still living under the crumbs of racism, the misunderstanding of our culture, representation, and the assumption that we are all immigrant children whose parents have no status and voice for my education and the education of my classmates. The assumption that we are all Mexicans, that we do not speak very good English, and we won't speak up. How many times have my mother, father, and other families had to ask me or their child to translate for them, because the school did not have a translator? That is the responsibility that none of us bilingual children should do because of the school system not having that service.
We have 30 seconds left. I combined both, both as two separate sessions for public participation.
Okay. Us bilingual childrens, we do not get heard. The administrators, principal, and teachers always make decisions for us without the permission of our parents or ours. My parents raised me to respect my elders, but how do I respect an administrator, a teacher, if they don't respect and understand my culture? My culture background, my people, how do I respect my guidance counselor? Miss tell me when I most needed her, mostly she was there to judge me.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Can we let them finish, please? Can we please let them finish? Samantha, can you just finish, please?
Pardon? Do we, do we have a third speaker? Will you be speaking?
Yeah.
Can the last of you allocate your time to the other one? Is that okay?
So I'm speaking for her.
Okay.
Because she doesn't know how to speak English.
That's fine, but she can allocate her time to you.
Thank you. Please, continue.
Okay. When I most needed her emotionally, she was there to judge me at the point and, and point a finger at me to create more drama to other students. It was kept confessional. How do I respect the leaders of the district? How do I respect the leader of this district? Dr. Karen Carillo Couch, if I never once seen her interact and give us services to our Latino community. Yet she publicly says that she is a woman of color. Us Latinos are proud, proud of our culture, humble, united, caring, but most importantly, grateful group of people that regardless the unfairness and unable to give the appropriate service, services from the administration and school system, we still say thank you. Speaking of thank you, speaking of thank you, thank you, Sam Buckle, for supporting us, defending, and speaking of, on our behalf of all of us students. It makes me so proud that someone else, who is not of our color, seems to understand the true indifference that made in our school system. I know that, that you made sure we were a part of students' government, government, and as a group, we felt we were finally part of the school, some way to make a difference. Thank you, Sam, for making a positive difference in our school. President Joe Getz, I'm thankful and left, and felt supported by attendants at this event. You came to Kent County Middle School back in November for our presentation, "The Real World."
My good friend, Chris, who is a senior this year, and I have never experienced importance until you attended this event for our community. To my English teacher, to some of the staff of Kent County Public Schools and administrators, who do not have the patience and the sense to plant a small seed in us bilingual children. We will get there. We ask to please make us feel part of your lesson, do not push us away. We shout out silently for help when we are at loss. If you need us for us to teach you Spanish, we will, and you teach us English as we work together in this journey of becoming bilingual proficient speakers of the English language. To guidance counselors and principals...
30 seconds.
We ask you to please check us on once as a line. We are trying to adapt to a new country with many barriers, or our hard-working parents work in the fields, landscaping, factories, at minimum wage, with no benefits and 14-long hour shifts.
Thank you very much for your participation, and I appreciate it. The next participant is Mr. Frank Rhodes. Ms. Barbried.
For my three-minute start, I did try to follow, right, Ms. Buckle? You said email teachers if you had anything specific. Are you starting my clock?
Time is started. Thank you.
So notice my white boots, because some of your teachers wanted to say boots are the proverbial strap-up for some people. If we could take a moment, I'd like to pause and say a prayer. In the power for the name of Jesus, amen. In recent days, it was brought before me the comments and voices, shared opinions of a few Kent County teachers. In a nutshell, I gathered from the exchange of information, these professional educators believe a local chapter of white nationalists, a moms group operating right here in Kent County, is using fear tactics, fanning flames of what is happening in education. What's happening in education? This small minority, they called us, is a... This small minority they called us is accused of making calculated attacks right now. If you're with me struggling with the whirlwind of name-calling, slanders, I needed to research white nationalists. Should I even be offended? Like I can help the lack of melanin in my skin color? So in doing so, I'll share with you. It popped up when I researched it that white nationalist groups expels white supremacies or white separatist ideologies often focusing on alleged inferiority of non-whites. Groups listed in a variety of other category of quarters, including Ku Klux Klan, Neo- Confederate, Neo-Nazis, racist skinheads. This one got me.
Ms. Reed, does this have to do with school board?
Bullshit, it does. Christian identities.
Going to end your time. Thank you so much for your participation.
Dr. Couch just said she wanted to acknowledge, these were your teachers who called moms that show up here a supremacist group. You didn't get back to me when I reached out to you individually. I just read a definition. Let me continue. So in a March seventeenth statement by Dr. Couch, don't close us down, I'm a stakeholder.
Ms. Reed, we're finished for, we're the public participation.
People here are even.
Please, Adam.
So Dr. Couch wants adults to solve disagreements with patients, with dialogue.
I, I would just caution that obscenities shouldn't be used during public comment. And you know.
I'm sorry, I lost my cool. He tried to cut me off and they've already tried to silence me by using my race, by using my religion.
I, I think Mr. Getz asked you to, if that was relevant to board business and if there's some relevant.
The teachers just slandered me like Dr. Couch says she feels she slandered. Should I brought a lawyer? I've already walked with my boots and took my kids out of this public school. And that's what these teachers were saying. If you pull your kids out, you're racist, you're.
Adam, please.
They're calling names, but then they want us to trust them with our children.
Please, Adam.
I would let her comment on board business, just not to.
So board business, clean up your dol, dialogue. Earn our trust back. You're gonna do that? No, you just want me to shut the you-know-what up. I'll wait to see what other people have to say. I'm tired of showing up here.
The next partic.
Tell me if I take my money elsewhere, that's a problem.
The next participant is Mr. Dale Brown. The clock has not been started, just to clarify. I've reset the timer. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dale Kevin Brown the first, former proud principal, Kent County High School. On March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, Dr. Couch issued a statement regarding comments made by a community member at the March Board of Education meeting. Dr. Couch chose to present her response in a public forum, therefore I will exercise that same right. I attest that Mr. Rhodes' comments at the last Board of Education meeting were accurate and complete. On May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty days following the senseless murder of George Floyd, Mr. Mark Buckle, Kent County High School Assistant Principal, Ms. Barbara Jones, Kent County High School Administrative Assistant, I attended the funeral of a Kent County High School student who tragically lost her life in a car accident. When we arrived, Mr. Brian Kirby met us in exchange about access to the Kent County High School room, weight room. Mr. Kirby uttered racial slurs against Dr. Couch by referring to her as a wetback, as well as stating that she swam to Rio Grande to get the superintendent position. I defended her in that absence. After the funeral, Mr. Buckle, Ms. Jones, and I traveled to the board office. Mrs. Manley, sitting here to my left, Dr. Couch's administrative assistant greeted us. When entering Dr. Couch's office, she said, this is one of the few times as a black man you can wear a mask without the fear of being shot and killed. Mrs. Manley immediately gasped loudly. Mr. Buckle, Ms. Jones appeared speechless. I replied, I just defended your honor against racist comments made about you less than an hour ago, and this is what you say to me. Raising both of her hands above her head, Dr. Couch said, please don't shoot my purses over there. After leaving the board, I immediately contacted Mr. Ed Silver, former, former HR supervisor regarding this incident. Mr. Silver indicated he would get back to me with appropriate protocol for reporting the incident, however, the date he has not. That evening, I similarly reported racial comments to Mr. Nivek Johnson, Kent County Public School Board of Education mem, member, and emphasized my distress. Mr. Buckle was a witness to this as well. To be explicitly clear, the same day as the racial remarks were made to me, I reported the issue to Kent County Public School Board Member and HR. Furthermore, I reported this to Mr. Silver on numerous occasions after a day, expressing my concern up until the day that he escorted me to pick up my personal belongings when I was placed on administrative leave from Kent County High School. Following the July twelfth, twenty-one board meeting, Mr. Nivek Johnson told me that the issue had been discussed and the board members were determining disciplinary action. Mr. Buckle, Mr. Jones, nor I have been contacted about this incident or asked for statements as a part of investigation by HR.
Mr. Brown, you have thirty seconds. Please finish your final thought.
My psychological, I'll skip the other part, but um, I will share the rest of this in a different forum. My psychological state and health have all been negatively impacted by how my fellow colleagues and I have been treated as a result of this situation. Minimally, each of us are owed an apology and a statement discredited by Dr. Couch citing the injustice and uncovering this disgraceful and unruly truth. A formal investigation needs to be launched. Incidents like this are nothing unfamiliar to Kent County Public Schools. The incident and this handling or lack thereof have been devastated.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We appreciate your comments.
I stand here tonight for my loved ones, minority educators, most importantly, all of the children of Kent County Public Schools. Trojans strong, Trojans tough, and most importantly, Trojans for life.
Our next presenter is Mr. Matthew Swanson. Mr. Swanson, you're the next presenter, please. Participant.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Swanson. I had to do some editing on the fly to get under three minutes, so excuse me if I'm a little choppy here. I wanted to share a few thoughts about my experience as a parent of kids in Kent County schools. I have three kids that have gone through the schools so far or in the process of doing so, and I just want to say how impressed I have been consistently with their teachers. Kind, hardworking, compassionate people who show up for their students every day. In spite of crowded classrooms, in spite of not having the special ed support that would make it easier for them to meet the needs of their students, in spite of tight budgets that often mean having to purchase their own classroom supplies, and in spite of the many extra challenges and responsibilities that come from serving a high-needs community. In spite of all these less than optimal conditions, my kids' teachers have showed up every morning with a smile to provide the best possible education to their students. Now, in sixth and eighth grades respectively, my kids Alden and Cato have had the same positive experience at Kent County Middle School that they had at Garnett Elementary. Their teachers have become even more important fixtures in their lives as they've entered middle school, serving not just as classroom educators, but role models and mentors, actively helping them identify opportunities to push themselves, to express their opinions, to discover and explore their interests, and to think through the challenges of adolescence. Throughout the pandemic, my kids' teachers have been a lifeline, a source of connection beyond quarantine, a bright spot of inspiration through long and challenging days, always doing more than was asked of them and always putting our kids' needs first, in spite of all the extra time and effort it required. Now, I'm just a dad who hears all these stories secondhand, so I asked my kids to share a few thoughts about their teachers and what I got back would take all night to read frankly, so I'll give you the abridged version, so. From my ten-year-old Augie, who is in Mrs. Smith's fourth grade class at Garnett Elementary, my teacher Mrs. Smith is so nice. She is cool because she always tries to make our learning as enjoyable as possible. I crossed out some details, but he had a couple of choice things to share. From my twelve-year-old Cato, who's a sixth grader at KCMS, I have some amazing teachers, but especially Mrs. Johnston and Mr. Miller. These two are great because they make my time at school a lot more fun. Mr. Miller's a great gym teacher, but he also runs a really fun after-school activity where we get to make our own clubs. Mrs. Johnston teaches typing, reading, and coding. We're always doing fun things in her class. And my daughter Alden, who's currently an eighth grader at KCMS, my teachers have been amazing, each of them going the extra mile. My science teacher, Mr. Copeland, organized after-school clubs for us nerds. My social studies teacher, Mr. Reed, jokes with us in class and makes games. My English teacher, Mrs. O'Gore, is helping me write a book. My algebra teacher, Ms. Anderson, lets me eat lunch with her every day and often we end up talking about stuff that is in algebra. Listen, our county schools might not have the resources of better-funded districts, but we have the most important thing of all, which is extraordinary effort and heart. These things can only come from dedicated people working incredibly hard. We are lucky that so many talented educators have chosen to devote themselves to the children of Kent County in spite of the many and ongoing challenges. I think they deserve our praise, appreciation, and support.
Our next speaker is Ms. Rebecca Harris Smith.
Hello, Dr. Couch. Hello, board. Teachers across the country have been hit hard by the pandemic. More than five hundred and sixty thousand teachers have left the profession over the past two years. A new survey of the American Psychological Association details the trauma teachers and schools, school staff have been forced to endure by parents and students alike. Six in ten educators said they experienced some form of physical or verbal abuse. This really bothers me. I felt even before COVID that teachers were underpaid and underappreciated, and what's happening now to teachers is unacceptable. I'm here to try to change that narrative and share some positive things about how our KCPS staff and teachers to, share some positive things about them to make sure that they know that they are appreciated, respected, and valued. I reached out to some parents in the community asking for some positive experiences they've had in KCPS and particularly this last year. I am pleased to report that literally no one said they couldn't think of anything good to say. They were pleased to share these gems with me and are happy to have me share them with you now. From the Strayer family, the staff who works with my kids at KCMF have been amazing this year. The team of teachers, Mrs. Henry, Mrs. Reinhardt, Ustelton, Ms. Griffin, and Ms. Kerstetter, who are working together in sixth grade, are phenomenal. They have gone above and beyond when it comes to communicating with me about my daughter's academics. I was a bit worried when she transitioned from two teachers to four, but with their support and willingness to work with her, she is doing much better this quarter. My son, who also attends KCMS as an eighth grader, says he feels supported by everyone. He wanted to give a shout out specifically to Mr. Jeff Reed for his honesty, transparency, and authenticity in social studies. He is willing to put himself in a student's shoes long enough to show empathy and support a student's needs. We love KCMS. From Joyce Watkins, I feel that the teachers have been extremely supportive of my girls through my separation and divorce. The middle and high school teachers have had my daughters during that time. Even now, the teachers continue to provide support and keep my ex-husband and me in the loop of things, both positive and negative with our girls. She went on to say that with her littlest, when her littlest started pre-K, she had issues with the automatic flushers at Galena Elementary. Ms. Davis and Kami Gerstung went out of their way to work together with both parents to get this little one better acclimated to school life. And from the Tickners, when Abby, a student at Galena Elementary, earned a prize in class, she chose eating lunch with her teacher, Ms. Saxton, instead of a more typical or expected prize because she likes her teachers so much. And I personally would like to thank all of the teachers that my son has had at Galena Elementary and Millington Elementary prior. They've been awesome and I love our staff in the office at Galena, and I just want to push some positivity out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Laura Worth.
I'm also going to take the time slot for the next one is Roban Fitian. Good evening. I have three children in Kent County Public Schools.
I'm going to add that time to this so that I don't cut you short.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I have three children in Kent County Public Schools. I'm very involved in the school system. I run the PTA at the elementary school. I've signed up to volunteer at the middle school PTA. I volunteer for the events, the fundraisers. I'm a part of a steering committee that helps bring the community and the schools together. Last week, my daughter was attacked during class by another student. They had a substitute that day and no one was removed from the room. No referral was written. The next day, a video of my child being attacked started circulating around and my child was being made fun of. This video was brought to the attention of the principal and she pulled the girls out of class to speak with them. My child was very upset she would be in trouble as she has never been in trouble before. The principal told my child she would not call home and tell me about the incident. She told my child that they would need to stay after school for detention with the other student that attacked her. She told my child she could tell me whatever story she wanted as long as she stayed after school. They came up with the idea of telling me they were staying after for tutoring. My child said my mother won't believe that because I have all As, so they came up with telling me that my child was chosen to tutor the child that attacked her. My child did not feel right about keeping the truth from me and she ran to another teacher crying. When the principal found out my child was telling people what happened, she immediately put my child in in-school suspension. I'd never received a phone call about this incident. Instead, I found the video of my child being attacked on the internet. Watching a video of my own child was hard for me. I can never fully erase that video off the internet. Shortly after I found the video, I received an email from my child panicking because she was in in-school suspension. I drove straight to the school to figure out what was happening. I'm sure the principal will tell you the situation has been handled, but I, if I had not found the video, I would have never known. If I didn't raise my child to always tell the truth and be respectful, I would have never known. I was going to show the video on your screen here for all of you to be able to see my child being attacked, but I decided I'll spare my daughter from further embarrassment. In the video, it's clear it was planned for the student to start recording and another student looks directly into the camera and then attacks my daughter from behind. How dare the school try to belittle my daughter's emotions that she felt after someone put their hands on her body? They should have acknowledged her emotions and communicated with me. I've worked hard for twelve years building an honest, respectful relationship with my daughter and the school system has ruined that. If you're questioning anything I have said tonight, I have the video, I have an email from my daughter, and I have a voicemail from the principal to back my story. I do not completely blame this situation on the staff and students involved. I blame the public school system. You are lacking communication and you are lacking accountability. The Board of Ed, your administrators, your teachers, your parents should all be communicating at all times. Good communication could help you handle a lot of your issues. Your staff and administrators should be on the same page when it comes to discipline. You claim you have zero tolerance policy when it comes to bullying and violence, but that's not true. You're only following through with the situations that you pick and choose to. The rest gets swept under the rug. I have spoken to multiple parents that have similar violence issues. Anytime another student puts their hands on somebody, they should be removed immediately. Anytime you have a video of my underage child, I should be called immediately. We need to address the mental health and the violence in our schools immediately. No wonder some of these students are talking about suicide and hurting people. They feel they have no choice. These students are begging for mental health support. Help them. Stop focusing on your test scores and focus on the violence and the mental health. You have amazing teachers in your school system. They just need more support and resources. I hold you responsible for not giving your staff and administrators the support they need and the extra staffing and resources they need. The day I came to speak to the principal, she said she had lunch duty that day. A principal does not have time to babysit students during lunch. She is running a school. You are failing to provide a safe learning environment for our children. We need more resources and support such as hallway, lunch, bathroom monitors. We need behavioral therapists, mental health classes. Reach out to your community. Reach out to the Big Sisters, Big Brothers Program. Reach out to anybody that you can. Find the resources to fund it. Tell them mental health is declining due to COVID and use a COVID grant to bring in more resources. Cut your own salary. Do absolutely whatever it takes to bring some more resources and support because the Kent County Public School System is failing. I came to you four years ago crying and begging to bring social workers into the school because my child was not safe. You told me you didn't have the funding. Magically, the next year, you found the funding to put a social worker in each school. Here I am again crying and begging for you to do whatever it takes to make Kent County Public Schools a safe place for our children to learn. When I went to speak with the principal, I removed my child from the room as I spoke with her because I still want my child to have respect for your staff and administrators. I still have faith in the school system. Do not let me down. Do not let your staff down. Do not let these children down and do something before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes?
My time started?
Right now.
My name is Frank Rhodes and I have lived in Kent County since the seventies. Both of our children attend Kent County High School as juniors. I am here to address the comments from Dale Brown today, and I want to read something. Dr. Couch was saying that we shouldn't talk about certain things at this meeting. Well, I brought with me a Constitution of the United States, just so you know, and I'm sure everyone here has read it. Amendment one says Congress shall ignore law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for a re. the right of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." I gather you're the government. Am I correct? Okay, so, in Maryland, fighting hate crimes, a resource guide in Maryland. You may be a victim of a hate crime under Maryland law if you are targeted because of your race, color, religion, sexual orientation, or gender identity. One of the examples in Maryland State is verbal abuse and slurs. Dr. Couch, in my opinion, this is a hate crime perpetrated by you. This board needs to have a vote of no confidence for Dr. Couch. Furthermore, I have reviewed Dr. Couch's March 17 response regarding this incident, which was published. You were troubled that the conversation did not happen as described. Well, it did, and in my opinion, you are lying. There were four witnesses at this event. Then, to add insult to injury, you introduced the race card. I guess, in my opinion, that it was okay to call a black man the things that you did. One of your members knew of the situation the day it occurred, and the situation was relayed to human resources, and nothing was done. Nothing. I can't believe it. You guys held on to this for months. Your response is full of untruths, and clearly, this situation was swept under the carpet. Again, who on this board knew about this incident? If you did, you are complicit in these actions and should be held accountable, and possibly guilty by association of a hate crime. One person on this board knew of this incident the day it happened. Why was no action taken?
Rhodes, you have 30 seconds.
Okay, I'm almost done. Another board member is the editor of the Kent County News. Will the paper just sweep this under the carpet for fear of having to deal with Dr. Couch? I ask, why is Kent County Public Schools next to the last in scoring, just above Baltimore? What young families will want to move to Kent County? Dr. Couch, you set a real good example. I urge our county commissioners to hold back any financing for a new school until the current House is under-
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes.
-order. I will stick for 10 more seconds. In conclusion, I plan to use every tool available to go up the ladder and see that your position is withdrawn immediately. We need change, and shame on you again.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. The next participant is Ms. Valerie Walters.
I'm going to speak about the statement that was issued after the last board meeting in regards to the inappropriate and racist choice of words to Principal Brown from our superintendent. First and foremost, I find it appalling that one thought it was okay to even say what was said. Second of all, in the statement, it was never once denied that what was said was in fact said. That statement came across to the general public that he, Brown, misunderstood what was said, and it was not meant as was interpreted. It was also falsely stated that the superintendent was colleagues with Brown. The fact is, we know the superintendent of public school systems are the boss of the principals employed underneath of you. Furthermore, the statement went on to discredit what I said. It was stated that I leveled a personal attack with false information. I can assure you that I will not only fill this room, but this entire building with students that can speak up about the so-called false information from a personal standpoint. You see, for the past six years, I've had children in that high school, and in those six years, all four of my children and their friends have come home to talk to me about the inappropriate material taught and discussed. Not only do you preach racism under the disguise of social, emotional learning, and equity, your schools and select teachers push political propaganda on our students, our children. You employ teachers at that high school that push their own political views on their students. This is a direct violation of Maryland Code 1-304 and 1-305. It specifically says, "An employee of a governmental entity may not advocate the overthrow of government by unconstitutional or violent means, or engage in political activity while on the job during working hours." And if you are charged with that, violating it will give you a misdemeanor and conviction, imprisonment not exceeding six months, or a fine not exceeding $3,000, or both. You have teachers at that high school that breed racism. Furthermore, you have teachers in our county that teach children that it is okay to be disrespectful, burn down cities, and hurt others if it is something that you believe in standing up for. These are not values that many parents want taught and instilled in their children, as we do not teach these values at home. I'm not saying that all of you up there believe in this and would personally choose this, but you have a job to do, and that is to oversee the education of our children. In your positions, you can challenge curriculum. You can make change if you really want to. But sitting on the sidelines, idling, and not doing a darn thing is not going to stop, is going to stop. You are destroying our youth. The only two things that we need as far as standards in this county's public education are the graduation rate and the behavioral measurements. And conveniently, those are the only two things you, Dr. Couch, can control. You push children through that are not of passing standards because you really don't care, and you certainly don't care about their behavior. You won't allow staff or administration to hold them accountable. You should be ashamed of yourself, and you should-
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Appreciate it.
And according to your contract, the board desires to provide a superintendent with a written employment contract-
Thank you, Ms. Walters. We appreciate it.
...and then the freedom of stability. You have failed.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is reports. Kent County Teachers Association.
Good evening, Dr. Couch. President Getz, members of the Board, and Mr. Buckle.
Good evening.
From what I understand, we may be close to a tentative agreement for our contract next year. I'd like to thank the board negotiating team, and our own-
ACTA team members for their hard work and sometimes long meetings to make sure that our contract is mutually beneficial. Excuse me. I've been teaching in Kent County for 16 years, and before that, I was a student in Kent County. I've seen a lot of things change in that time. I've gone from overhead projectors and pull-down maps to Promethean boards and online platforms for learning. I've seen the rise of cell phones in the schools and the challenges those produce for both students and staff. I have seen administrators come and go, and some very cherished colleagues as well. What never ceases to amaze me is the dedication of the teachers in Kent County. I have seen so many amazing teacher projects, field trips, fundraisers, and incentives on social media this year. Many teachers are dipping into their own pockets to reward students and encourage them to love school and learning. On a personal note, my daughter's first grade class last week earned a glow party for meeting their character milestones in class, and it was amazing to see just how much Ms. Van Zant did for them to celebrate their good behavior and love of learning. These dedicated teachers are tired. They want to feel safe in school. They want their students to feel safe in school, and they want to know that they are supported in their work. What they are asking for is less "do this" and more "how can we help?" If central office could be more present in our larger schools and provide additional support in areas like student behavior, I know that teachers would be grateful for the assistance. As I said last month, teacher working conditions are student learning conditions, and I hope that we'll remember that. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, the next portion of the evening is board discussion. I'd like to start up with Mr. Buckle. Please, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Couch, President Getz, fellow members of the Board. School updates are as follows. From Kent County High School, on April 8th is Girls Across at Stephen Decatur and Kent County High School Tennis Team at St. Michael's. Same day, on April 8th, Kent County High School's Boys Across versus Stephen Decatur is home at Trojan Stadium at 4:00 PM. On April 12th, Kent County High School will host its College and Career Fair, 50-plus vendors, from 7:30 AM to 12:30 PM. On April 14th, Kent County Public Schools' Half Day for Students, Kent County High School students will dismiss at 11:30 PM. On April 15th through April 18th, Kent County Public Schools' Spring Break, schools and offices closed at Kent County High School. On April 26th through April 28th, Kent County Public Schools' Fine Arts Showcase at Kent County High School, and on May 14th, Kent County High School will host its Prom. Finally, Kent County High School Class of 2023 Spurring Basket fundraiser is open for bidding on the Kent County High School Facebook page. Come to the Facebook page to support the Class of 2023. From Henry Highland Garnett Elementary School, on April 19th through the 22nd is the School Book Fair. On April 21st is Family Math Night. On April 26th is Pre-K and Kindergarten Registration. On April 28th is the Art Showcase at Kent County High School, and that will take place at 6:00 PM. And finally, on May 6th is the Community Fair from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Henry Highland Garnett Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Costa.
Oh, um, let's see. Since the last meeting, I went to the lunch at the radio station, which was very nice, as always. It was their fundraiser. And just this afternoon, before coming here, I went to a wonderful celebration at Rock Hall Elementary School for the kids in first, second, and third grades, and the many volunteer tutors that have been tutoring them in math. And I've been, as a lot of you people on the board know, I've been really wanting to see more volunteer tutors in our schools, and this was really great to see how many they were, and they were very enthusiastic, and so were the kids. I went to the Character Counts celebration, I guess it was last night. Also, really nice to see our kids doing so well. Some of the kids who wrote essays that were read kind of moved me to tears. They were really very good. I went on April 2nd, I attended a conference for foster parents, a Zoom conference, that had a two-hour session about digital safety that I think was so good, and I'm gonna, I know they made a recording of it. I'm going to see if we can get it for maybe PTAs to show. It's really something all parents should see. It made my hair stand on end. I had no idea things were as bad as they are in the digital world. But it's really sort of a crisis with suicides and kids as young as six being targeted by predators online. So I'm going to see if we can make that available to all of our parents. The Resource Fair was also very well done, I thought, by, I think Wendy Keen, maybe. I learned a lot about resources in this community. I wish they had been in the community I was raising my kids in. They needed a lot of mental health resources in the community that I didn't know about.
Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you. First, I wanted to acknowledge the three students who spoke tonight, and thank you for being courageous enough to show up and speak to us, and I expect that someone from the school will be in touch about the issues that you brought up tonight. So thank you. And I also would like to thank Ms. Manley for the invite to go to the math tutorial session that was at Rock Hall tonight, and I apparently just missed Wendy. It was great meeting all of the volunteers. Ron Fithian was there as well, and he got to speak to the volunteers, and I think they really appreciated that recognition. I'd like to also thank Dr. Holiker and Mr. Sorrell for taking the time to give a tour at KCMS yesterday, to myself and a Chestertown Council member. The council member was very impressed with the work going on there and the teachers and students that they met. And I'd say the best way to get to know our schools is to come inside, and I'd be happy to schedule a time for any community member that's interested, and you can email me anytime for that. The Citizens Advisory Committee had another very productive meeting in March. Dan DeVilio gave an update on communications, including the addition of a new community feedback forum that's on the KCPS website. The forum can be found by clicking on the About Us menu item and selecting Community Input from the dropdown. The CAC meeting for April, which would normally be held on April 25th, is rescheduled now for May 2nd, since the Teacher of the Year Ceremony is being held that same evening. And I wanted to also acknowledge Dan for all of the work he's done on the KCPS website, on the social media graphics, and to let people know that we now have a presence on Instagram, and for some really nice print advertising that we've been seeing for some of our job openings. KCPS will be hosting a job fair on Saturday, this Saturday, April 9th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at Kent County High School. If you have any questions or want to get more information, you can contact Dan Hushen, Supervisor of Human Resources. And as Sam mentioned, on April 28th, there is a countywide fine arts showcase at Kent County High School, where there will be live student performances, as well as an exhibit of student artwork. And since many KCPS families also participate in 4H, I wanted to remind everyone that the Kent County Ag Center is holding their spring auction and 4H Family Fun Day this Saturday, and there will be many activities with 4H Clubs and information on how to join 4H. On May 12th, I just saw this, that the Parents and Guardians of 8th Grade Students with IEPs and 504s should save this date for a Transition Night that's going to take place on that Thursday. There will be a dinner provided, and you'll get to meet members of the high school Special Education Team and learn about post-secondary planning and opportunities. Pre-K and kindergarten registrations are coming up. At Galena, it's April 25th. At Garnett, April 26th. Rock Hall, April 27th. And I know we had a couple people, Dr. Couch included, that congratulated the winners of the Character Counts Essay Contest, but I wanted to go ahead and read all the names of all of the students who were awarded. So, from Garnett, it was Jaden Gillis, Amanda Rovia, Dominique Noraki, Braden Brown, Isabella Tonelli, Charlie Hickman, and Braxton Murray. From Rock Hall, Ava Santos. From Galena, Harper Speck. From Kent County Middle School, Cato Swanson, Alden Swanson. From Kent County High School, Kate Cannon, Taylor Walls, Grace Lindsay, Melissa Landon, Ezra Kyle, Chelsea Bender, Alexandra Miller, Luke Coran, Nicholas Jones, and Kira McColligan. And I apologize if I mispronounced anybody's names. More information about upcoming events and our outstanding student accomplishments, as well as links to KCPS social media, can be found in the new newsroom on the KCPS website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. McGee?
I also want to recognize the three students who spoke up, and I'm wondering if we could get a copy of your speech. It was difficult to hear in the beginning the student that spoke, and you weren't able to finish what you said, so I'd like to be able to read everything you said. So thank you very much. As Ms. Sullivan said, we had another Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, and Dr. Costa, you will be happy to hear that one of the members of the committee advocated very loudly for a volunteer coordinator, to see if that isn't something we can't find room for in our budget, and it was pretty well received by the committee members. I saw on Facebook yesterday that the Lamont Company had donated all these, I can't even think of the word now.
Lab jackets?
Yeah, the lab jackets for our students at the high school, and it just reminded me of the support we get from our community. I know that both the Rock Hall Lions and the Chestertown Lions Clubs have donated books to Garnett Elementary School and Rock Hall Elementary School. I also want to thank the new Police Chief in Chestertown. I know that he's been making regular drives by the school and stopping in to make that community feel safer, because sometimes there are some things going on in that neighborhood that they have no control over. So, that's that.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, want to report of our last Kent County Parks and Rec Committee meeting. As you know, I serve as liaison from the Board of Education on that committee. We had a good discussion. We started talking about, you know, events coming up. We also talked about the relationship with the new Chestertown YMCA and what that would look like, and continued to assure the Parks and Rec Committee that we are here to support them in whatever they do. I attended the Young Life Banquet in Graysonville, Maryland. I don't know if you know, Young Life is a branch of a program that meets with students to go over scripture and prayer outside of school. We are in the Bay Area. Bay Area consists of Queen Anne's County High School and Kent Island High School, as well as Kent County High School. We are a smaller branch of that program, but a branch. We also service Washington College, and with hopes to service any other middle schools in the area. Centerville Middle School is a part of that. I wanted to inform the Board of passing of Larry Samuel- I wanted to inform the Board of Passing of Larry Samuels, uh, one of our former substitutes and community leader, uh, has passed away. I believe we, um, we have all gotten that message, but taking some time to think about the, the legacy that Mr. Samuels left on this community, uh, having not been from this community and the work that he did to benefit the community, Legacy Day, through the Bayside Hoyas, uh, through working with churches. Uh, I think it, it shows a lot, you know, how we can get involved. Um, so, last, last thing, uh, I attended the National School Board Association Convention in San Diego. I wanted to report that I presented on equity, uh, our Equity Workbook for MAB, uh, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. Uh, the presentation was, uh, well-attended. I was on the panel along with, uh, Board Member Cousins from Calvert County and Board Member Corkedell from Anaronda County, as well as Board Member Evans from Montgomery County. We presented to a room about of 100. President Gatz was also available, uh, was also in attendance at that, that, um, that, uh, session. Also attended sessions on building culture, uh, community culture in our, um, our respective school districts, and attended a session on, uh, new methods on bringing awareness to our families and family engagement as well when I was there. I, I will take this time to apologize and to say, if I have failed this public body, if I fail this Board of Education, fail the students, the teachers, anyone in this county, I have my sincerest apologies. I, I don't serve to, this seat is not a seat that has any remote title for me. I'm not here because of a title. I'm not here because, I could be here. I'm here to serve. I haven't gotten everything right. I've gotten some things wrong, um, as most of you've heard. But I, if I failed, I am completely sorry. If I can do better, I'm here to do better. I'm here to learn. I'm here to work. I'm here to serve. Uh, we can't do this by one person doing it by themselves. We do it all together. I've shared intimate conversations with some of the people in this room, intimate conversations as we work together. We don't all come from the same places. We all come from different mindsets, but let us bridge together. Let us work together and let us move together to prepare our students. We know that our system is not working. We know that we don't do anything right, some things right. We know that we have had some screw-ups. That is not, that is not hidden. That is known. But from that, we have to move forward. We have to work together. And if, if it takes a mountain, if it takes roundtable discussions, if it takes coffee to bridge this gap, we can bridge the gap. We have a diverse climate in this county. We have a diverse student body. We have a diverse teaching body, and it's now time for us to really figure out. If we have to spend some Saturdays here at this board office, putting it out on paper, uh, spend some Saturdays, uh, at the high school, touring these schools, it is time. But please know, if I have failed you or failed anyone in this room, I am completely sorry. But that is not why I was here to fail you. I'm here to do better. If you need my number, I tell you this all the time, it's 443-480-0986. Please call me. Please talk. I'm here to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, I want to begin by thanking the students that also participated in public participation, as well as the students that came up and presented Makerspace. It takes a lot of courage to stand up and speak, as well as speak in front of strangers. So, thank you all for, for doing that tonight. Um, I also attended the Character Counts, um, uh, ceremony yesterday, and I just want to thank the Character Counts of Kent County folks, um, the, the board. Um, some of those folks are in this room this evening. Um, thank you for your continued support with that. It was a great evening. Um, it was actually really great to hear the, the readers, uh, reading their essays and, and getting on the stools to do it. So, it was actually a really nice event, and I want to continue to thank our, our public partners. Um, the other piece, as, as Dr., or as Mr. Johnson mentioned, I did attend the NSBA Conference in San Diego. Um, I was there, um, attended multiple sessions, uh, one on student achievement, uh, one on turning high-poverty schools into high-performing schools. Um, the educational equity piece, um, that Naveek presented at, which you did very well. Thank you for representing. Um, but there were, there were many more, um, sessions, um, and I just, uh, it was a really great event, and I was really appreciative to be able to have that opportunity. Um, the last piece that I want to, um, I want to read a statement, um, and this is coming from me, but this is regarding decorum and public comment. "The public comment period during our board meetings serves many important purposes. For you, members of the public, this is but one of many avenues you have to voice your concerns about our school system policies, procedures, and practices. Offer constructive criticism of the work we are doing and bring to the attention of the board all sorts of matters affecting public education here in Kent County. For the board, this is our chance to hear from you about what we are doing right, what we could improve upon, and hear about the issues you feel are important that are affecting our schools. Although our meeting agendas are packed, we carve out public participation time each meeting because public comment and the exchange of ideas is so vital to the continued success of our school system. Again, public comment is a time to share your ideas, opinions, and yes, criticism of, of the work we do here. But I want to stress that there is an expectation that speakers maintain a level of reasonable decorum so that the limited time we have together is not unnecessarily disrupted, and that the focus of our meetings always be related to board business, not personal gripes, attacks, or topics totally unrelated to public education in Kent County. I want to end by thanking our hard-working KCPS staff. That includes maintenance workers, transportation workers, food service workers, administrative support staff, instructional assistants, teachers, administrators, those working here at Central Office, as well as the school system leadership. Dr. Couch and your team, thank you all for your tremendous efforts. It's appreciated." Thank you. The next item on the agenda is education services, and the first item is intervention overview.
Good evening, President Gatz, Dr. Couch, members of the board.
Good evening.
Tonight, I share with you a presentation on behalf of our Title I team, Missy Butler, the Coordinator for Title I, along with the following Title I leadership within our schools. Rachel Hopkins, Galena Elementary School, Heather Davis, Garnet, Marlene Vosberg, and Diana Milligan at Rock Hall Elementary School. I appreciate their support for this, the preparation of this overview of the elementary interventions and the tutoring services. If a picture's worth a thousand words, this says it all. Tutoring is a critical part of our recovering and acceleration efforts. Our tutors and programs are funded through a variety of sources, including Title I, TSI, which stands for Transitional Supplemental Instruction Grant, and the Early Literacy Intervention Grant, also known as ELI. These grants offer many opportunities for both one-on-one tutoring, as well as small group instruction. Principals have restructured their master schedules and redesigned the day to allow more opportunities on a regular basis for job-in-bedit tutoring during the school day. At this point, 100% of students are receiving some type of personalized learning during their intervention and enrichment time, also known as academy time, at the elementary level. This time includes small group instruction based on a variety of formative assessments. Some of the programs here are just a few of the many that are available to our students on a regular basis. You've heard of them used both during face-to-face instruction, hybrid, as well as fully remote. Others are face-to-face alone. For example, um, the William and Mary Units are part of our Gifted and Talented Program, and they are also part of that academic acceleration time. Tutoring and interventions have been prioritized for those who experience learning loss. That may include students performing below level in reading or math, or those historically underserved students, such as gifted and talented. The total number of students served in research-based intensive interventions changes according to progress monitoring, but we wanted to share with you this evening that, on average, at Galena Elementary School, 107 students receive some type of tutoring service, 95 students at Garnet, and 126 students at Rock Hall Elementary. As a district, at this point, we employ 20 tutors, and these are tutors that provide student services, push-in services during the school day. We also have 18 volunteers that provide tutoring on a regular basis outside of the school day to our students. We are very fortunate to have a variety of research-based programs that we offer. We consider these to be highly qual-, high-quality instructional materials, and the next few slides will represent some of the current interventions offered during the school day. One you've heard us talk about before is called Sound Partners. This particular intervention was introduced at Rock Hall Elementary School with great success, and this past year it has expanded, and we are now offering this program at all three schools. It's intended to reinforce both phonics and foundational reading skills, one-on-one, which is, again, the best way to offer tutoring. The tutors push in, and I know some of you have visited classrooms and seen this in action before. Um, the students seamlessly are working one-on-one with the tutor during regular classroom instruction. The teachers, along with the tutors, monitor the data, and tutors then also, um, administer the assessment. If you, if you are tutoring one student, another tutor actually provides the assessment to see if progress is being made. And, uh, the mastery tests are the evidence that the interventionists and tutors collect all along the way to determine whether or not the appropriate progress is being made or adjustments need to be made. This year at Rock Hall Elementary School, they have a champion for a program called Do the Math, and anyone that's worked with Ms. Vosberg before knows that she's a true champion. When she loves something, everyone's gonna love it. So, in this case, 80 students at Rock Hall are participating in the Do the Math program. This is a research-based program focused on number core, addition and subtraction, and provides a real hands-on approach to teaching. The key to any effective tutoring is consistency and the relationship between the student and the tutor. Um, the next intervention that we're going to share has a champion at Garnet, and that is a former, um, Kent County teacher, Beth Coxon. Beth has returned to Garnet, and Beth is trained in Foundations. So, Foundations is an outstanding program, again, offered as part of our tutoring repertoire for students in grades K through 3, providing reinforcement in phonics and foundational skills. They are, progress is monitored through regular unit assessments. Beth has trained many of the other tutors to also support with the Foundations program. It is not only offered in Garnet, it's also offered at Rock Hall Elementary, as well as Galena Elementary. The next program is one of our, that complements our core literacy program, Wonders. It's called Wonder Works, and Wonder Works is available to students in grades 1 through 5. The teachers, along with the interventionists in each school, use data to identify the students that will most benefit from this type of comprehension and foundational skill reinforcement. As part of that intervention block that was carefully crafted by our principals building of the master schedule, the teachers have identified students to receive Wonder Works intervention, either one-on-one, or small group, or with a tutor, or a teacher. And again, there is not a single assessment, um, a single tutoring program that we're offering where progress is not monitored on a regular basis. A program new to Garnet this year is called Just Words, and what's different about this is this is really specifically for grades 3 through 5. And this student has a multi-sensory approach to decoding and spelling, but again, must be offered either small group or with a tutor. And, um, I know Heather Davis said she uses the MAP data, along with other elements of testing, to monitor the progress of the Just Words program. Students have really received this program well. They're very enthusiastic, and you can see the gains. We know that that vocabulary matters, and their understanding of being able to quickly and fluently decode words is going to be the bridge to becoming successful readers. An intervention at Garnet that is also, um, offered is part of the 95% group, and it's a comprehension Blue Kit intervention. And again, this is done primarily by tutors and our interventionists for identified students in grades 3 through 5. We wanted to give you an overview tonight of just a quick snapshot, but we'll also leave available, so you can get more information, the variety of interventions that are available for our students. From this quick overview, you could easily see that mathematics is an area where we need to really establish more support and ongoing, um, research-based interventions. So, that is part of the work that our team is doing as we're applying for the Maryland Leads Grant as well, which you'll hear about in just a few minutes. From the team that prepared the report tonight, the thing I think that brings the most pride is their commitment to really monitoring and looking at the growth of our students. And every one of these, um, students participating, their mid-year MAP scores have shown growth if they are consistently participating in their interventions. This last slide is just a great opportunity to see a snapshot. We removed the student names, but this will kind of give you an overview of the types of data our interventionists are collecting on a regular basis, and when they meet weekly with the teachers, and then, again, on a regular basis with our interventionist team, they use this to have their discussions and see if any adjustments need to be made on which programs are best suited for which children. So, that's just a quick snapshot of the Title I tutoring and interventions, and at this time, I'd like to just ask if there are any questions or comments.
I've got a question, um, and it's probably a simple answer. Do we provide tutoring beyond elementary school?
Yes. So, this year, um, our middle school actually is also using Lexia as part of their intervention time, and they have a math program as well. Um, and just recently, is Angie still here? They have per-, what is the name of the one that you just purchased?
I Ready.
I Ready is a new purchase, um, that, um, they have used their Title I funding, and that will be able to, um, bring additional support to our middle school students in that area as well.
Is it, is tutoring available to, to all grade levels at the middle school? Okay.
And there is, um, tutoring at the high school.
Okay. I mean, I understand how important it is to get students early, but I also think it's important to sort of recoup or do something to someone who's gotten past us without us realizing they, they needed assistance.
And we're seeing, um, we're seeing quite a bit of that with the pandemic, so that's something that the Maryland Leads Grant is intended to address as well, not just elementary, but all levels.
Thanks.
You know, community colleges usually have writing centers where students can come and have a tutor, um, help them with, with their writing. I wonder if it would be possible to set up something like that at the high school.
Um, I could tell you that Mr. Block has already been in contact with, um, Mrs. Hemstetter about that, and right now, he's reaching out to determine whether there are any other volunteers that would be interested in, in staffing something like that. So, I think that they're in their early stages of trying to put that together.
Good.
Question, questions, sorry. Um, does anyone else? Um, how, how, I see 100% of students are receiving some type of personalized learning during their intervention and enrichment time. How many, how many dual or, or triple, how many interventions can one student have?
That's a great question. So, yeah, that would be a little tricky to have multiple interventions. And what our principals have done, and what they've shared during their, um, preparation for this slideshow as well, is how they are really needing to structure their intervention time carefully, and most of them do it on a rotating basis. For example, in one school, it is two days reading, three days math. In another school, in another grade, they may flip it every week. So, uh, because there are some students that need support in both content areas. Primarily, our interventions, um, are focused on those two content areas. However, we also, as I mentioned earlier, have some enrichment opportunities, which is why we say we're serving 100% of the students. So, just recently, on our learning walk, um, for example, in Galena Elementary School, they're doing a book study as one of their enrichment, um, opportunities. In another school, we saw second graders, um, engaged in a STEM project. So, I think it's given them an opportunity to really think creatively about the schedule, address those that are significantly below with research-based interventions, and allow us to do some more creative, project-based opportunities for those that us to do some more creative project-based opportunities for those that need enrichment.
Okay. But yeah, understandable, thank you for that. I guess my question is, okay, this is another question. If we had to look at, how many of our teachers are taking what the students are learning in the intervention and bringing that to the whole, the whole classroom? So taking, for example, my classroom, when we do have an intervention, I have a tendency to take something we've learned in that intervention and bring it to the whole class that would benefit them. Do we, I'm assuming we do that, do we do that?
So it's much more seamless in the early years. For example, if the intervention is foundational skills, and you're providing a specific intervention in phonics, and then the whole group lesson will complement that lesson, that's a seamless way to transfer from what they're learning intervention to the whole group. I would say, out of all the interventions I shared tonight, probably the other one is WonderWorks, because WonderWorks is designed intentionally, as you're saying, to complement the core program. And so when they're providing that intervention, what they're doing is they're offering the same content that they're learning in the reading, but in a different level passage to be able to scaffold it. And again, I think that's a great question, because then you're able to bring it back to the general education class as well.
Thank you. And so, so I just want to, because I see it here, but I just want to make more sense of it. If we just had to look at a chunk of a day, we would say, pretty much throughout the whole day, students would spend close to about 30 minutes in some...
This year, the 30 to 40 minutes is the typical, what you would call Intervention Academy enrichment time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Well, I am happy to see that looks like, you know, from the interventions, there is some growth from fall MAP to mid-year MAP, and some progress monitoring growth as well. So it is beneficial to see that interventions are working. I just get very, and this is just me, cognizant of, do we, that we don't get overzealous with intervention, that we also find time for regular direct instruction? Because I've heard from public stakeholders, and many of us are employees, who say, you know, we spend too much time doing the technological side of the intervention and not doing enough time to direct instruction. And they're, I don't want, this is personally me, it being used as another way to educate our children when it's supposed to be that extension to the classroom. I'm not saying anyone's doing that, but I know that that has been done in other districts. But I'm glad to see that we do have some time built in just for intervention and not just being used. So thank you.
Yes, I appreciate that. And when we speak in a moment, I don't want to get ahead of myself about our grant, you'll hear a little bit more about the importance of that core instruction and things that we're doing to really tighten it up, so.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Jacomois? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda, and that was for information only, thank you, no action needed. The next item on the agenda is Maryland Leeds, and I see Mr. Hushin coming up.
Thank you, President Getz, school board members, Dr. Couch, Ms. Jacomois and I are going to tag-team this, but I'm going to give her a little break from speaking. We are here just for information only, just to give you an update on where we are with the Leeds Grant. As it was discussed last month, MSDE has made a grant available to all 24 school systems. You know, it's being seen as a wonderful opportunity to do some innovative things. There are seven strategic areas that each school system can focus on. We must focus on at least two. The Department of Teaching and Learning, as well as Human Resources, have been working together, where our departments are focusing on four out of the seven strategies, and we're just here to give you a brief overview on what those strategy areas are and some of the things that we're going to be looking to address. So the first area is growing our own. This strategic area is to, you know, help rebuild a pipeline of educators. We here in Kent County are looking to grow our own support staff. Some of our folks who have expressed interest in changing careers and supporting them through that certification process. We have some substitutes, some excellent substitutes, who have expressed interest due to their experience as a sub of pursuing certification, and also looking to tack into our current student body up at that high school and start a pipeline from there. Through this work, it's our intention that we will become a more diverse staff and have a more diverse pipeline that is ready to work in our school system. And we're also looking at opportunities for paid internships for critical shortage areas like school psychologists, speech and language, special ed, et cetera. Ms. Jacomois is going to come up and talk about the next two strategic areas.
The other area is the science of reading. And the science of reading, we took the time to do a quick staff survey, so we asked all of our teachers to share with us, you know, where they felt their knowledge is at this point in terms of understanding the science of reading, so they could kind of self-rate, and then what did they say, what did they believe they needed in order to more effectively align their instruction with what we know the latest research tells us is the best practice in science of reading. And what exactly that means is basically helping us unpack what students need to know and be able to do to be proficient readers. Science of reading is based on the information in terms of building strong foundational skills in reading, and when we say that, we're talking about from the very smallest speech sound, the phonemes, to the phonics, to the fluency, comprehension and vocabulary. So this grant is going to give us an opportunity to participate in courses. One is called, even though it isn't spelled as the word letters, it's L-E-T-R-S. It's a Wilson Foundations course that will give teachers, early childhood, as well as upper elementary administrators and other positions, an opportunity to really get that basic foundational course in understanding how to teach reading. That's an important part of our grant itself. In addition to that, there are other opportunities for providing professional development in the area of training a leadership cadre, so that we have our own Train the Trainer onsite for programs that I'm sure you've heard of, such as Orton-Gillingham. So that is also something we're writing into our grant, so that even though we are a small district, we would have someone onsite that would carry that skillset and be able to provide that support to others. In addition, the science of reading is also about the materials that we offer and the assessment tools that are available. So in our grant, we have also, we don't want to start fresh. We feel like we have enough new initiatives underway, so we want to build our capacity with our current, for example, in Edge Elastic with the assessments. It's really working with a contract service to be sure that we're aligning our assessments with the standards and that we're able to offer a comprehensive suite of assessments, so teachers aren't having to go out and create everything on their own, which can be very burdensome. And probably the other piece that jumps out the most is the commitment, the accountability piece with the progress monitoring. And we progress monitor in a variety of ways. We do it through assessing students, but we also do it through observations, principals observe classes. But the most powerful thing to do is to be able to observe and give feedback to one another. So this grant will give an opportunity for teacher-to-teacher, to be able to do inner-classroom visits, to build our own capacity to be what you would call a critical friend, and go in and give feedback and give support and recognize some of the great things that are happening within and across our classrooms. So the science of reading certainly will build, bring a wonderful of not only professional development opportunities, but probably we're most excited about, we are requesting a literacy coach position for every school. And that will be something that Kent County has never had before. So we're very excited about being able to build the school-based literacy coach as part of our commitment in the Maryland Leeds Grant as well. So I'll continue on with the tutoring. And so the next part of the grant is what they call high-quality tutoring. And what we know here is that you are to commit to doing tutoring during the school day, and that fits beautifully into the presentation I just shared. So what we put in our grant, number one, is a tutor facilitator role, so that we can have someone that's available onsite to help us coordinate all these efforts. And we're not only talking about the paid tutors, but also volunteer tutors. So someone that can help us really take all these different opportunities that are in front of us and help coordinate those as well. We are going to expand our existing school day tutoring, so that you will see many more opportunities in mathematics, and also in the area of gifted and talented. You heard me say a moment ago that that's an underserved population, so this Maryland Leeds Grant is going to allow us to include resources, research-based resources, to offer support for gifted experiences in mathematics, as well as in early reading. There is a program that the grant will bring to our fingertips called Godes, where students will be getting more background content knowledge in the early years through rich, novel experiences. So I'm trying to think if there's anything else in the quick snapshot. Oh, and building the pipeline. So Washington College is a partner with us in this application. They've also submitted to be a partner through the grant, Chesapeake College as well. And then it also includes our own capacity of working within a school, so we do some cross-training. So we would have the volunteer trainers, special educators, our instructional assistants. Many team members would be involved in this comprehensive tutoring opportunity. So, and then I'll give it back to Dan to do the last piece.
It's okay. And our last strategic area is something that obviously I think we would all agree on is extremely important. There was a data point shared earlier about the number of teachers that are leaving across the country. We have, you know, heard from our own staff about the, you know, challenges that they're experiencing. So the staff support and retention strategic area really gives us an opportunity to do some really transformational things, where we're going to focus on staff health and wellness initiatives, you know, enhanced career development opportunities, which includes starting our very own National Board Certification cohort, other, you know, different kind of strategies that we haven't been able to implement in the past to help with overall retention in Kent County, and looking at redesigning our new teacher induction program. Something that, you know, we have seen, you know, is that many of our new teachers over the last couple of years have not gone through a traditional student teaching experience like many of us in this room have. And, you know, we know that we have to, you know, better support them during that process, and it also kind of will marry over to what's coming down the pike with the blueprint, excuse me. So we're very excited about this opportunity. We're working very, very diligently to do some things that we just have not been able to do.
I would note that this is a non-competitive grant, which means we will get this grant. It's just a question of how much money will we get, and then the determination as to specifically what under here will be funded and what will not. So we're confident, this is a federal grant that every, that the state of Maryland received, and all of the monies were pushed out, and it was made a determination that a minimum of $2 million per county is non-competitive, and then it goes upward from there. So we're hopeful with this grant in sight, we're looking at about five, a little over $5 million.
I think 5.2.
Or is it closer to six?
Yeah.
Over the two years?
Yes.
Okay. Will, can I ask a couple of questions? So in addition to bolstering the staff we have and adding to their toolbox, does it include us hiring additional staff?
Yes.
Okay, what do we?
Some aspects of it.
Okay. The Grow Your Own thing, is that there any way that we can at least use our, don't we still have the teaching thing as one of our pathways?
Yeah.
I mean, the foundation is kind of there for that, you know?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, Trace, you good or?
Yeah, answer that.
Yeah, so obviously, that is a focus area, but we also, you know, know that there are students in Kent County High School that have expressed interest in pursuing a career and education that are not actually in the TAM program, you know, and we have a couple ideas of how to, you know, introduce those students, you know, and expose them, you know, to what the process is actually like.
One of the incentives might be the fact that, you know, if Kerwin comes to pass, they can be guaranteed a pretty nice starting salary, which I hope is a recruitment tool. I thought one of the really important things about the tutoring was, is to build it into the school day, because that, not having transportation is such a handicap to kids in so many things. So the fact that we're going to remove that obstacle, I think is huge.
If I can speak to, the other thing our instructional team came up with is actually building in this grant an opportunity to have the cohort onsite, so they're calling them student support coaches. So we are going to do a recruitment of tutors and put it out there. Right now, we have 20 that are part of Title I consistently. Our goal next year is to move that to 36, so that we could have a teacher and tutor paired pre-K through grade 1, and then we'll have some additional pairings with teams as we continue through the years, all the way through high school. We're actually going to pair some tutors with high school, I forget what their departments, I think it is, as well.
Okay. And I was reading the timeline, we should find out this month what our actual allocation of that grant's going to be, right?
Right. Ideally, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I was looking at the literature.
Initially, the grant was due today, but we were allowed to apply for an extension, which we did. And so it's due next week, and we are under the impression that we should know something within a couple of weeks after the grant's submitted.
So we haven't even submitted our grant yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're in the final stages.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson?
Sorry. I don't want to be a downer here, but how would the literacy coaches that you mentioned, besides them being in the home, in a home school, how is that different from the literacy coaches that we already employ to support?
Right, so we don't have any literacy coaches in our schools.
So, so the ones that are at the board office?
They are instructional specialists, and we have two that serve all content areas, so they are different roles.
Because how I heard it, that they were coaches that were going, but the title has changed.
Correct.
It's always been, okay, maybe that's my misunderstanding and the public's misunderstanding. Mr. Hushin, you said something that I just want to be clear, it sounded very problematic to me, I don't know if anybody else called it, depart on the new teacher induction.
Sure.
Because you said that our teachers haven't, most of our teachers haven't formally been through an induction process. That's what it sounded like to me. I just want to be clear that that doesn't undercut that our teachers don't come to our classroom ahead of time.
I think he meant that they aren't, they haven't gone through...
I understood that. They haven't gone through student, proper student teaching. I understand that, but I don't want it to seem that our teachers are already coming to us with no, with no, I think, for the public's knowledge, that they are receiving help and support. Because that's what, there was a disconnect.
No, it's just enhancing the supports in addition to what we already provide. And this grant gives us that opportunity to enhance everything that we do and go above and beyond of what we've been able to do.
Okay, thank you, that was all. But I think this is a great grant, and can't look forward to seeing what comes from it.
And just clarification, we also do have an induction program.
Okay. Yeah, that was what, I see it says redesigning, but I just, how I heard it, and I just wanted to make sure it's said as such.
Right.
Yep.
I just had one comment. I think these things you want to do are great and are going to make a I think these things you want to do are great and are going to make a difference. But I just think we should add something that doesn't cost anything, which is a policy that all kids in our school system will read for 20 minutes a night. And not something really that could be tested necessarily, or they could write about what they're reading. But I think that is essential if they're really going to get to be proficient readers. It's got to be that home component. And we somehow have to get it through to parents that they're responsible for that. Otherwise, I don't think these things are going to have as much of an effect as we hope they will.
One of the things that's written into the grant is a literacy campaign. And so I know we talked about trying to document and to track the number of words that each of the students are reading and perhaps gauging it by a meter of some sort, putting it in the newspaper. We talked about billboards, but then we started thinking about switching out. The billboards might be costly and it might not be as effective. But finding ways to change the culture in terms of reading is important in this community. And it spreads into every area of the community. Like you go to the grocery store, you might be able to see how many words our kids have read. So, you know, just thinking about ways in which we can spread a literacy campaign throughout the community and focus on reading. So I think we're saying the same things. We just might be going about it a little differently.
Yeah, I don't know. Numbers of words really don't mean much to me. I don't know how many words are even in a book.
Well, we could even track the number of books. Yeah, we could do both. I think we should do both, just simply because in some cases, it might be more difficult for some of our special legislation students to read a number of books, but maybe we could track both.
And it makes sense to do both because, again, if you are trying to encourage students to venture into the chapter books and the higher level reading, you don't want them to feel like they're not successful because perhaps they read two compared to the child sitting next to you who read 20 picture books.
Right.
So you have to really think through those pieces.
Right. But I think we're saying the same thing. We definitely want to focus on a literacy campaign.
And just to clarify, one last thing about the induction program. It's not just a focus on our new teachers either. It's also to, you know, provide supports to the mentors, you know, to, you know, better equip and, you know, better prepare and give them different professional development opportunities, you know, over the next couple of years to enhance, you know, their expertise and knowledge as well. So it is a two-way street when I talk about the induction program. It's not just an emphasis on our teachers, but it's also the people that support them.
I've got one last question. So it would be great if it happens this way, but it's possible that we won't get enough money to do all the things that we want. Who's in charge of and how, what's the criteria to decide what's prioritized?
It's a great question. I know that there are some, what they call focus areas that they've given us. So there are some non-negotiables that we must include to even apply. So I think we're going to have to look at those areas and decide what matters most.
What's left after we've funded those?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
Are there any additional questions regarding this Maryland Leads grant? This is for information purposes only. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to commend the staff. They've been working very hard to complete this grant. This grant has been one that we were notified very late in the process. And the turnaround time was very quick. And I know that Mr. Hushen and Ms. Jacobowitz and her team, they've all been working very hard. And I know that Linda Kohler has been helping us as well from Chesapeake Charity. She's helping us with writing the grant, and she's working very hard as well. So just a lot of effort, a lot of time being put into this grant.
Just a notice, Mr. Johnson had to leave for an engagement for tomorrow. He has a conference he has to go to. So we still have a quorum, so we can continue business as listed. So thank you. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, President Getz, board members, Dr. Couch. Last month, I came to you with, for information, the bullying and bullying policy and procedure updates that were really mirroring the model policy that MSD had. And so over the course of the month, I did receive some feedback and made some changes. What I put up, what you'll see on your screen is not what's in board docs. So that's what I wanted to make sure that you saw. And I'll get that to you, yeah. There's just a few things, Gail, that came in. So I just wanted to make note that anything in red that you already had that's in board docs, that's what we changed last, that's what we brought for you last month. And then just a few changes. And I just wanted to show you, it's really, oh, shoot, there we go. It's minimal. It's just, you know, anything that's highlighted in yellow is what we changed or added. I don't think it really changed the meaning of anything. I think it just enhanced. You'll see that we changed, again, gender identity to gender expression, a few wording changes, and then added number seven, another definition. So that really is mirrored in the policy and procedure. I don't really need to pull up both because it's very similar, those pieces. And then we took the, and then we made it very gender neutral, so. If there aren't any questions, I would ask that we would be able to approve tonight.
Am I correct that a lot of the language came basically from the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's kind of what was the genesis of us.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes, that's a good question. So the model policy came out a few months ago. And we were asked to, each county was asked to bring it to their boards by March.
Okay.
So, yes.
Are there any additional questions? Okay, as Ms. Williams stated, this is an action item. The administration is recommending approval of changes to policy JKA. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Sullivan has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Ms. McGee. Any further comments or questions? Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is titled donations.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. You have a memo before you that is recommending approval of two donations for the Kent County High School Makerspace Club. There is a donation of $5,000 that was received from the Raymond James Charitable Endowment Fund on behalf of the McIntosh Family Fund. And then a donation of $2,098 received from the Chestertown Rotary Club for the Kent County High School Makerspace Club.
Okay, the administration is recommending approval for the $5,000 donation from the Raymond James Charitable Endowment Fund and the $2,098 donation from the Chestertown Rotary Club. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Sullivan. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Ms. McGee. Any further comments or questions?
I just want to say, when those two kids were up here, I felt like I was listening to two geniuses. I didn't know, I didn't understand a darn thing they were saying.
You're not the only one.
But they were talking the talk. So, and I was blown away by that presentation.
Me too. I thought, boy, I'm a 20th century person, and it's not the 20th century anymore.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
I think it's money that's being well-spent, yes.
We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the KCHS roof bid.
Good evening, President Getz, members of the board, Dr. Couch.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to present the results of the bid tabulation report for the Kent County High School Roofing Project. We did have seven responsive bidders to the project. We had an eighth who unfortunately submitted their bid too late, so we couldn't accept their bid. But like I said, it was a great turnout for us anyway with what we're used to. So we're here tonight to, for your approval, to award the General Contracting Services of the Project, D Project, Inc. Just a quick background of the project. It's going to start this summer. It's going to be a two-year project. So it'll begin in June of 2022, once students let out. And then we're hoping to have it finished by September of 2023. The bid itself consisted of a base bid, which is a standard cold-applied, two-ply modified floor coat and gravel roof system, which is essentially what we have on most of our schools already. And then we also had an alternate base bid, which is a hot-applied, two-ply modified Energy Star roof system, which is similar to what we had put on Rock Hall Elementary School roof. And then we did include one add alternate to the project, which was an installation of new metal standing seam throughout all the canopies around the school. So we're here tonight requesting approval to award base bid number one and add alternate number one to D Project, Inc. in the amount of $7,016,000.
This is an action item. The administration is recommending, requesting favorable approval by the board to award base bid number one and add alternate number one to D Project, Inc. in the amount of $7,016,000. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve it.
We have a motion by Dr. Costa. Do we have a second?
Second? Can I ask, I'm trying to?
I just want to clarify. We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Are there comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm trying to follow across the table of the, one, two, three, four, the seven.
Sure.
Their bids. And the alternates kind of threw me off a little bit. Is this the lowest, was this the lowest bidder?
This was not the lowest bidder. So in our review process, sure, and I can explain. In our review process, we discovered in the reference section, and Mr. Holstner, who helps us with these projects, he's from Garland, who supplies all the roofing material. He had had experience with our low bidder, some negative experience in a different K through 12 project within the last few years. So like, so I researched it a little bit and spoke with folks from Wycomico County Public Schools who they had some issues with. And they also had some issues with a project at Salisbury University within the last few years. So this is my first time that we have.
No, that's fine. I just didn't think it was the lowest.
Sure, sure. And this is my first time since being here that we have had to disqualify somebody that was the lowest bidder due to past performance issues. So, but I will say that the project still came in under budget of what we were expecting it to. So we're happy about that. But yes, unfortunately, we did have to disqualify our initial low bidder.
I, you know, when you get older, which I'm getting older, when you say a couple of years ago, it's actually more than a couple of years ago. But it wasn't that long ago that we just put a roof, a new roof on that high school, wasn't it? I mean?
I believe we had a partial replacement. But that was, from my records, it was back in the early 90s, I believe. We had done a renovation project at the high school back in 2005 and '06, but it did not touch the roof. I think the HVAC units might have been replaced at that time. But the roof itself, most of that roof is still original from 1970, so.
Yeah, I'm thinking back to, it was a $10 million project, is what I remember at the high school. Any idea how many years we can expect to get out of this roof?
We've gotten, they're always warranted for at least 30 years. So we always have a 30-year warranty. We hope to get as much as we can out of them.
Yeah, I'm good with 30, okay.
So like I said, there's portions of that one. We've gotten 50-plus years out of at this point. So we don't want to push it that far. But we're hoping it'll last that long if we can help it anyway.
It's a flat roof?
Yes, that's correct.
Why do they always build schools with flat roofs?
Um, it's.
I'm never again voting for a flat roof.
It's more cost-efficient to do it that way. I'll, that's about as much as I can speak to it. But you are right, most of them are built that way.
You people don't build houses anymore with flat roofs.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is the expenditures and revenue report. I see Ms. Stewart coming forward.
Good evening, Dr. Couch, President Getz, members of the board. Tonight, we're going to go over the expenditure financial report as of March 31, 2022. We'll start with the revenue. You will see for Fund One, which is our current expense, we received to date about $27.1 million. For our Fund Three, that's our school construction, about $733,000. Fund Five, which our food service, $817,000. To give us a total of $28,694,429.04 in cash receipts as of March 31, 2022. We go to our current expense fund. As of March 31, we have expended about 84%. We come down to our school construction. There's no percentage here. However, this tells us what we have expended so far in our school construction with the noted account titles for the contractual services that have been provided. We go to our food service. We have expended about 76% of our budget. And last but not least, our restrictive funds, to date about 36%. But as I always put in a caveat, we can, we only get reimbursed what we spend out. So to date, we've expended with all our grant funds, $4.9 million. And then the last page just gives you a financial overview with our receipts and our expenditures. Any questions?
Any questions regarding the report? This memo was for information purposes only. No action was required. If there are no questions or comments, we'll move on to the next portion of the meeting, which is the fiscal year 2023 superintendent's budget. Thank you, Ms. Stewart, for that first portion.
No problem.
Yes, can you put that up on there?
The superintendent's budget.
We're trying to load the superintendent's budget. Okay. Okay, so you'll see the first thing is it's no longer a preliminary budget. It's the budget. We added the district goals. This is on our strategic plan. And these are the six strategic goals that we have listed there. The vision and mission statements. The factors that affect the budget are the enrollment, state compensatory aid, blueprint for Maryland's future funding, that's Kerwin, the salary and healthcare increases, and of course, budget requests. You'll note that on this particular slide, we took off, you'll remember on the preliminary budget, we had projected a loss of maintenance of effort of about $433,000. That has been zeroed out simply because House Bill 1450 has passed both chambers. It's on the governor's desk, which would hold us harmless. And all counties in the state of Maryland would receive the same maintenance of effort next year as they received this year.
Are we optimistic that Hogan's going to sign it? I mean, because you know how he felt about Kerwin.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think that there's any, well, I'm sure there's a possibility, but very unlikely that he's not going to sign it.
Okay.
There are a number of things. This is not just maintenance of effort on this particular bill. It includes timeline changes for Kerwin. It includes a lot of modifications to the Kerwin legislation itself and then other cleanup items that have to be in place for Kerwin to move forward. Net increase in state aid is the $887,000. The net increase in other revenues, the $768,392, that's our fund balance. The net increase in other revenues, the $768,392, that's our fund balance. Decrease in federal sources is $71,000. That is, actually, that is an amount that we have to, I don't know if you want to explain that a little bit more, Ms. Stewart?
Essentially, that was funding that we were receiving for the retiree drug subsidy, but we no longer are in that program, so that's not, those are not funds that we are guaranteed to receive going forward.
Okay. So the net increase in revenue is $1,058,5087. That is just a breakdown of the revenue, and it shows you exactly where the money is, is coming from and where it will be applied. The overview of estimated expenditures, the $1,077,079 is the increase in salaries. That's for the negotiated agreements. We have tentative agreements with two of our, our unions, and so we're waiting on the last one to settle, but this is what we expect to pay out in salary increases. The estimated FICA increase, which is the fringe benefits, is $101,904. The cost for healthcare increase is $146,884. That's an increase that we have to budget for. $70,000 in the retirement increase, and then you saw, we saw a decrease in our capital outlay of about $6,699,6, $6,699. Estimated other necessary budget increases of $85,000. It'll go on the next slide, and I can explain that a little bit further. And we're going to explain this a little bit more when we go over the workbook, but we were able to, to go through, well, I would, I should say that Ms. Stewart and I were able to go through the workbook itself and look for ways in which we could reduce and save money within the budget, and we found an additional $50,000 that we should be able to save within the workbook, and we'll, we'll highlight that for you in a minute.
Can I ask a question? I'm looking at the preliminary budget compared to, to this budget, and there's a significant change, I think, in the increase in salaries and the, and the FICA in the new budget. By, we went from $760 for increase in salaries to over a million, and from 77 to 101. Is that just being part of the negotiation process?
No, part of that was my error. It was a grammatical error. I actually pulled the information. I had the right information on a latter slide, but just on that slide, I just pulled the wrong information. So that's also the adjustment, and the increases attributed to negotiated agreements as well. And I believe we did correct that, and the correct one should be on board docs.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No problem. No, you're fine.
Yeah, it was one of those things that it was right on one slide, but it was wrong on the other. The estimated salary increase, this is where we broke it down so that you could see where the salary increases fell. The estimated salaries for '23, we're transitioning one of our techs from 10-month to 12-month. Two of our counselors at the high school would be added 10 days to their contracted, to their contract, so they'd have 10 contracted days additional to what they have already. Two positions would be moving from grants to the local budget, and then a reduction of six teaching positions and an adding of a teacher for the deaf and hard of hearing. We did put in red that we expect that the reductions will be through attrition and retirements. FICA increase, there's a 7.65% of the total salaries. Healthcare increase is about 4%. Retirement increase, and then the other budgetary increases are as follows. $35,000 for the ed specs that we anticipate we'll need for the high school. We, that's questionable. We want to make sure we have that in the budget, but we're not positive that we're going to have to, to do that. But we didn't want to be held short with that request later if we didn't need it, so it's in the budget. And then $50,000 increase to cover building repairs and also increase in utilities. And then, of course, the decrease in expenditure in the budget book, which we'll go over in a few minutes. And that slide is a little different than before the preliminary, because we showed two scenarios. We showed one scenario of if the House bill did not pass, and at that point, we were looking at House bill, at Senate bill 640, and now it's, it transferred into House bill 1450. But we no longer have to worry about one or the other scenario, because it's already at the governor's desk. And with that, with this budget, and adding in the zeroing out of the loss in maintenance of effort, we anticipate we'll have about $161,000 remaining in the budget. So we'll be in the, in the black versus in the red.
It looks like there's an increase in transportation from the preliminary also?
Yes. Isn't that from the negotiated agreement?
Yes, it should be, but I'm not sure. I would have to look at the number, what you're referring to, the preliminary number, because I don't remember off the top.
We'll just have to double check. I don't know.
Okay.
The capital request, we added this into the budget, just so that you're aware. That this is the money that we're asking from the county, and it shows exactly what it breaks down to with A&E and what the estimated cost is for the state and for the local. And it, just in a clear way of expenditure-wise, we're requesting $4,126,200 from the county. They do have this in their budget, FY '23, it would be $3,99,150. And then in '24, it'd be $1,027,050. And so it's broken down into two years, and we'll do part of the roof this summer, and then the rest of it will be done in '24. Oops. Oh, I'm going the wrong way.
Fiscal year '24 as opposed to summer of 2023?
Yeah, it'll be done the summer of '24.
Oh, it will be completed. Oh, okay. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, we'll do a portion of it next year and then the summer, and then the, the rest of it the following year. It's just too large of a, of a space to get it done all in one summer.
Right, okay.
There's nothing in here about the middle school planning. We don't have any numbers for that yet.
We don't have any, oh, you mean for A&E or you mean for the ed specs? What, what do you-
Yeah, and for planning for the, for whether we're doing the middle school and where it would be and-
Okay, so that's where the ed specs is for the high school. It may be part of that same plan. But that, I think we're going to have a better idea of what the scope of that project is going to be when the IAC comes to visit in May, on May 6th, and that'll give us a better idea. But to, to note, we initially had talked to the county about A&E monies for planning, and that is a little bit premature, because we don't really know for sure what the project is going to be and where that project will be, whether it's going to be a renovation project or whether it's going to be a replacement project, and that has a lot to do with the cost for the A&E. So we anticipate that that request will come in '24.
You think when the people come on May 6th, they'll, they'll, I mean, I, I can't see spending money figuring out whether we're going to renovate that old middle school. It, it seems like a waste of money. We should just go to the planning for a new one.
I think, I think that the IAC has a lot to do. It's their money. They're going to have a say in, in what they think we, we should be doing. But we still have to have control, and we still have to have an opportunity to talk to our community and get input from our community as well. So to say that the, the state's going to come in and say, this is the way you're going to do it, and, and I mean, obviously, they, they are going to push us in a direction that they feel is the most cost-effective, but we still have a responsibility to our community to make sure that we, you know, have a space for community input and to make some determination in that we don't really have a clear idea of where-
Yeah, we don't know what the, the grade level configuration or any of that stuff is, and I don't, I'm not sure which we saw first. I mean, it's like, I don't know where to get an answer for, you know?
It's a hard one.
Just a question on the IAC. They're, if they're here in county May 6th, and they, they work through or they come up with their findings, what is that turnaround? How does, what is that length of time that they come back and say, these are our findings, our recommendations as to how the county should-
I'd say, I'd say fairly quickly. I mean, I had a conversation with them about a week ago, and they're already putting together some numbers and some suggestions. They already have an idea of where they'd like for us to go. I'm not prepared to share that publicly, because I don't know that we're there yet, but I think that they should be able to have some numbers for us within a couple of weeks.
And the intention then, once that happens, would that be to reconvene with the county commissioners again?
They've offered to go to the county commissioners with us in terms of, of sharing those numbers, and of course, they offered to come to the board as well. So I, I think we're, we've still got a lot more steps that we have to go through before we can make that determination.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't sure about the timeline after that.
I'm not sure either.
We've been waiting for this visit, so that we can figure out what-
Yeah, well, and I, I'm just thinking that their offer to go with the, you know, with you and Joe, and you go to the county commissioners or whatever, is great, but that should only happen if-
After we're done.
If we've decided that we're, because what if they want one thing and we want the other? There's a, you know, it's got to be a united front, one way or the other, doesn't it?
Right. Ultimately, they have a lot of the cards on their, on their side of the deck. Because we want their cooperation in that they're paying for at least 50% of the project. We don't really have dollars that we can put towards this project. It's the county and the state project. So ultimately, I mean, we hopefully will come to the same agreement and we'll get there. But if it comes right down to it, let's just say hypothetically, we don't agree with the IAC, and we say we don't want to do that. This is the project that we want to do, then they are liable to say, well, then this is all will contribute to that project, and you're going to have to get the rest of the dollars from the county. If the county's not willing to pay the additional dollars, then we're in a stalemate.
Up a creek.
We're in a stalemate.
Can we discuss the, that, those dates that you mentioned for the follow-up?
Yes. So I have April the 28th or March, excuse me, or May the 2nd.
I'm available only on April the 28th.
I, I can be available either day.
I'm not available either day.
You're not available either day?
No, I'm out of town.
You're not available either day?
No, I said I can be available either day.
Got it.
Sam?
I'm good for both.
Okay.
I'm good for both also.
So since we have the CAC meeting, how about the April the 28th, which is a Thursday?
Because that's originally what we were going to do. It was going to be the, what, March 25th or whatever? Okay.
Okay. April 28th.
And what's the time going to be? Seven?
I would say 6 o'clock.
Okay, well, but the CAC's at 5:30, isn't it?
No, they're on May the 2nd.
Oh, 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 okay, gotcha. Never mind. Brain freeze. Okay.
Yeah, the sooner, earlier, the better.
The budget hearing, right?
Yeah, 5:30 or 6?
6.
6, okay.
So now we just quickly like to go through the budget book, just to highlight the, the savings that we found. And again, I'd like to thank Ms. Stewart for her diligence in looking at, looking with a fine-tooth comb with the budget. We talked about some areas that trend-wise, that we've seen carry over from year to year to year to year that we really haven't touched. And so we looked at ways in which we could either reduce it or reallocate it to areas that we felt were more useful in the long term for the, for the budget book. So I'll have Ms. Stewart go through that real quick.
So I want to start with the restricted programs, that part of the budget book. I kind of revamped when I got here, when it came to fiscal year '22. I started out with looking at what we were approved, and you have to mind, we're kind of on a prior year thing, because we're not in '23 yet. So this is close to actual that we have. We looked at the grant awards that we have received in fiscal year '22 and what was carried over from '21, so this is close to accurate. Notice is estimates, but I wanted to bring to you all's attention, because I believe the American Rescue Plan, we received a lot of grant funding for that, and that is part of, not necessarily cares, but it's in conjunction with the pandemic. But once you approve the budget, this will also go under that approval, because we usually come before you to approve any new grants, but wanted to highlight that. You will see that if there is no amount in that requested 2023, we're not expecting to have funds for that for '23. So all of that is netting together for the federal and state funds. Page four is just detailing, well, highlighting what was approved for fiscal year '22. Page five is detailing what we are requesting for '23, and then you will note on page six, I'm going to get there, that is the comparison. So you'll see the $1,424,84 that we are projecting is going to be our expenditures. Now, we'll note with the, yes, it was an overall $50,000 savings, but it's meshed together with all of our adjustments, reallocation, increase in some areas, and negotiated agreements. So all of that is kind of lumped in one. We start with administration. In administration, and I'm trying to scroll down as well as trying to show you. In administration, if you see a number, for example, we have $4,000 in software and licensing, but if you come down to further down in the page, you'll see an increase in subscription and dues. Those things are what is netting and reallocating. So if you see a positive and a negative of the same number, that's showing reallocation. I do want to note the equipment rental. That was us transitioning from Xerox to Centric. It is showing that we saved about $27,000. However, in mid-level administration, Centric is covering for the printers for all schools. So we had to increase that about $3,900. So if you mesh it together, that's a total of about $23,000 savings in the Centric printers. We also increased recruiting and in line with staff retention and hiring, that is a need, and honestly, we're, we're budgeting for that to anticipate to assist with retaining our staff. If you go to mid-level administration, I'm not highlighting the salaries, because the salaries are based on those negotiated agreements, pending negotiated agreements. You will see what I was talking about with the contract, the $3,900. That is the increase on the side to cover for all printers at the schools. We did reduce $8,000 in communication. This includes our 10-4. We went with 10-4 with our telephones, and also this includes the internet and telephones at all the schools. I put in a little cushion. We probably could save a bit more, but I kind of want to be hesitant with that with all the cost increases, because this, you know, internet and telephones are being needed with new personnel. Every time that we have to do a phone line, it is an increased cost. So just to be on the safe side, we just reduced that about $8,000. You will see in commencement expenses and looking at the seven-year term review, commencement expenses have been, went over budget, the $7,500, so increasing that. We're hoping that that will help with commencement for the high school. If we go to instruction, I do want to note just a couple of things here. We did have savings in our other instructional positions. What I want to note here is that in the support personnel, it's $20,000 has been budgeted for the last seven years, and I think it's only maybe been used once, the account. Overall, the, there's no funds coming out of this budget line. With that being said, I am assuming before I started, it probably could have, you know, salaries for something concerning that could have been coded somewhere else, but we reduced that by $10,000. but we reduced that by $10,000. And then with evening school and looking at the seven-year trend, the highest that we have paid out for evening school is $7,200 and that was back in 2016 or 2017. The trend has been 5,000 between 3,000 to 5,000. So we've reduced that by $18,000. You would note that KBLA, I know we budget 70,000, but really of that 70,000, part of that belongs in contractual services with our regular programs, online courses at the high school. So that's why that is split. That 35,000 is covered somewhere else and we're still reviewing and looking at that. As we go along, we're looking at that further. I want to note the materials of instruction. With general instruction, we've increased that by $1,700. This is instruction materials that is for all schools, that all schools will have and we did it based on enrollment per pupil. 2020 to 2021 enrollment, which was a total of 1,812 students. You will see how that was allocated as well. We changed that. We didn't add anything with media center, but we divided the allocation for media center supplies to all schools, the same way we did for the general instruction. You will see we increased CTE by $500. CTE, there's a maintenance of effort requirement that we have for CTE. So assisting with that will assist with our maintenance of effort and to assist with the career and technology programs. There is a savings in cap and you will note the $1,500 in cap on the instruction side and then there's going to be a $1,500 savings on the, the special education side. The EdSpecs is in here for the middle school, you will note. Looking at printing, for the last seven years, this account has not been used as well as Carnegie. Well, Carnegie was used in fiscal year 15 and 16, but has not been used since. So those were some savings that we were able to look and capitalize on.
In the athletics band line item, does that include the, the new funding that we had, I think this year for athletics and band at the middle school?
No. There was, the only funding that we added for the middle school was for the interselestis sports. So this, the band, this just includes athletic bands for the high school.
Okay. So then would we include the inner, inner.
That is included here. If you go down. In extracurricular activities, the 18,500, that is included for the middle school.
Okay.
What's Carnegie?
Honestly, I do not know. The last time we spent money on that was 2015, 2016, has not been since and I've been asking around. I have not received the answer. So if it's something that comes up, we're just gonna have to review our budget. I don't really know for sure.
We actually, it's a program that we've had at the high school and it's just something that they have not been utilizing over the years. We had, did have an opportunity, I know Ms. Jacobowitz had an opportunity to talk with the vendor and they have, they have, of course, everybody that has anything that they can market. They're quite aware that we have the Maryland leads grant. So they're all trying to focus and, and get some, some buy-in from us. So we, I know that Ms. Jacobowitz listened to what they had to say and also did Mrs. Williams. And I'm not sure that we're gonna be utilizing them as of yet and I'm, I'm not really sure that they're gonna meet our needs. And they have to meet the vendor requests from the state as well. And so I, I, I just don't have an answer for you in terms of how that's going to work and, and what, what that's going to do to support the high school.
All right. Two things that we added and this was kind of listening to our principals and just noting things for our students. We added a budget line for teacher incentives and there's a budget line for student incentives. The reason why it's not as high is because we do have school funds online that is allocated for each school. So the schools themselves have funding where they can use as incentives. This is a way where we can show our, you know, try to show at least our additional support to our teachers and to our students and to the staff overall. This provides teachers incentives. So if they want to give something to all, you know, their instructional support, you know, you have your IA substitute, part-time workers, our full-time teachers, that's money that's there. $250 would go to the, each school as well for students. So for example, like there's fidgets. I know, like, I don't know if the middle school or high school uses that, but I know elementary school, they use fidgets. So a box of that, 100, 150 may cost 25 or 30 dollars. That's a, you know, incentive that can be used for students to help with stress and different things like that. So that's kind of a couple of things we just added to the budget, see how it goes and hopefully it will go over well. We want to get into special education. Pretty much in special education, I just want to note here, we really didn't do much of decrease on anything with savings. Reason being, special education, there's an excess cost and a maintenance of effort requirement for sped. So we want to make sure that we are utilizing the funds. We did reallocated more funding in our sped substitutes because we've been over budget for that, looking at the seven-year trend data. And we also added additional costs for materials of instruction for special education as well. And it will be based on that, the sped enrollment for each school and how it will be allocated as such. Student services, there weren't any changes, just reallocation. The health services, you would see the addition salary and that was part of one of the grant positions we had to add in. And transportation, there was not much there. We just did a reallocation of 13,000 to cover for the lease agreement for one bus. And overall, that's pretty much it when it comes to our budget. I will note that if you go to the latter pages of, so that you will be able to see it. That is with our school construction. You will see that here, how that divided out. And then with our food service, there wasn't much change. We kept it pretty much the same. And we'll continue to monitor food service as we're moving back into a full operational school. So we, we, the waivers didn't get extended. We don't have any extensions. So it's operating as normal when we get to fiscal year 23. So the only changes, there was the changes with the salary and then we just put it into food and food related. So our expenditures and revenues match out. Any questions?
Any questions?
Just thank you. It's a lot of work, so thank you.
Oh, no problem.
So the, the, essentially the free lunches will end, but they'll still continue at the community schools at, at Rock Hall and at Garnett. But Galena and the middle school and the high school will, will all have to switch back to.
Yes, we'll have, yes.
Fill in our cards.
Yes.
And I think we had talked in the past about the, which school was closest to reaching the low.
The middle school, but they're not, they're not gonna meet.
Okay. Thank you.
Anytime.
And thank you for this.
No problem.
Okay, any additional comments or questions?
This is just for information and one of the things that we will do during the budget hearing is we will start with the budget book and go through all of the savings that we have and then we'll add that into the PowerPoint and present that as our budget. After that, that'll give us opportunity to present to the county commissioners. I've, I have been in contact with Ms. Merritt and she is aware of the maintenance of effort amount. And so I think they also are aware of the capital, capital improvement request as well for capital. So they've got that in their budget as well.
But the April 28th meeting isn't the public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, it is the public, okay.
It's our public hearing for us.
Okay.
And then after that.
Do we do a community? Do we do a community?
It's not, yeah.
That's, that's the same thing.
Same thing, okay.
As opposed to us having a workshop.
This is it.
This is it today?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
This is it.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Board of Education Handbook Review.
Okay. We brought this forward for recommendation at the last board meeting. You made a couple of changes that I have included and they are with regard to the.
Citizens Advisory Committee and I was reading through.
And the streaming.
And the streaming and, and how we're archiving our minutes and.
Right.
Our meetings and stuff like that.
Right. So page 11 and 13, you'll see that the changes were made and read.
So I have a few questions if I can start off.
Okay.
As we're looking at, at page six, we're looking at board member qualifications, that portion that's kind of a half, half of the way down. The student member kind of qualifications is listed in there as well. But I'm, I'm, just for discussion, should we, should we pull that over to page seven under the student board member so that we're not jumping around per se? Do we want to have the student board member information all under one heading or not? I'm just asking. I can go both ways on that. Any comments, thoughts, questions?
Um, I, I think it makes sense to have it all together just for, for continuity.
So moving that paragraph, that's.
Which paragraph is that?
Page six, under board member qualifications.
It's the third paragraph.
The third paragraph is the one that we, that I'm, I'm just.
The student, the student member must be a resident of Kent County, that one?
Yeah, I mean, I understand it's qualifications, but, but the student board, the student member isn't a board member by statute, right? So the question I'm just asking is, can we take that information so that it's not parceled out and it's pretty clearly stated on page seven in the second portion under student board member, that it's all wrapped up in one. So there's not, there isn't a. I mean, it's just a, it's just one way or the other. I'm, I'm not.
I mean, I see what Joe's saying. There's the subhead that could say student board member and the first thing under that could be.
The qualifications.
Qualifications, yeah.
Okay.
So that's, that's just, that was one call out. The other, the other piece that I have or kind of ask is, is that throughout this document, the student board members referred to as student member. So are we, are we aligning with student board member or are we going to align with student member? Do we, do we align with the job description that's listed on page seven? Or, or the act? I mean, I'm just, we've got two titles and I'm just curious as to what, if we can, or asking if we can align to one title.
Title as in student board member or student member?
Yeah. I mean, student board member implies a, I mean, I'm just putting it out there, board member with voting rights.
Well, not necessarily.
Well, that's what I'm asking. That's why I'm bringing it up. Do we want to go with, with all student board member or just student member?
Well, or you think about, I'm looking at Sam when I say this, the, the acronym, the acronym is SMOB, student member of the board.
So.
I don't, I don't know if that gives you more clarity or not. I know, I understand what you're asking. I don't know the answer.
I'd like to have the, the title, the term being one throughout.
The same all the way through.
If it's student member of the board or whatever that might be. I just, I'm asking some opinion as to what, because I, I mean, I'm not saying it was confusing for Sam, but, but I mean, there's two titles there. So what is that? That's all I'm asking.
What do you say, what?
I think we should change it to student member of the board and maybe put the acronym to, just so it's clear.
Adam, eh, opinion?
Under section 3-801 of the education article, which is the statute which defines the membership of Kent County Board of Education, there's no mention whatsoever of student board member, unlike some other counties where there is a mention of the student board member, what their functions are, so on and so forth. So the student board member role, whatever you call it, is purely ceremonial nature unless the General Assembly were to amend the statute.
Correct. But also the student member is statued under MASC, which is in legislative session of MSDE now. So if we look into that as well, there is statute.
Yeah, I mean, we're reviewing it now. So that's why I'm asking, you know, do we want to align to something and be consistent throughout the document rather than having all this stuff?
Yeah, I mean, regardless of if it's ceremonial or not, I think just changing it to student member of the board.
I think student member of the board doesn't directly call him a student board member, just says he's the student member.
Of this board.
Student on the board, yeah.
And as all policies, if something changes, we adjust the policy accordingly.
Well, we vote on that.
Yeah, correct, correct.
And you're comfortable with that? I mean, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's totally fine.
Yeah, I just, I just want to have it be consistent because I, it's just, I'm reading it.
I mean, SMOB, I mean, I remember the first time I heard that SMOB. I'm like, what the heck's a SMOB? But it's, it's a, I'm looking at Sam again. It's, it's a real thing. I mean, that's just what you call each other, right? Yeah.
Then the other, the other question I have is on page 18, attachment A, and I don't want to necessarily get ahead of myself. But this policy that's listed here for code of ethics for school board members, National School Boards Association. Question, how does this align with the next agenda item for ethics policy?
That's why I brought it forward.
Yeah, so.
That's why we moved it is because one of the things that we talked about doing was putting in the ethics policy. But then as soon as I, we finished the last board meeting, I got a memorandum from the State Ethics Commission noting that changes had to be made into the ethics policy itself. So my question.
Specifically for us or everybody?
Everybody in the state.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we are, we were the first one to, we were the first one to submit our changes in terms of what they suggested that we, that we do. And the changes that I submitted to the State Ethics Commission are scheduled to be approved at their April board meeting.
So.
Are they in a format that would work in this context?
I mean, the only thing that I thought that you had asked me to do was to include the policy in this particular document. And I fully intended to do that, but then I got the memorandum stating that we had to make changes to the policy itself. Well, everybody around the state has, has to make changes.
Yeah, so, so.
So, so my question is, you're, you're making additional changes anyways. And this change to the ethics policy would be brought forward for approval at the next board meeting. So should we do both at the same time and then I add the next, the, the updated ethics policy?
I mean, I, I think that makes sense, but I.
I think so too.
I mean, I would ask you guys to tell me what you think.
Yes.
Okay. So I appreciate that. And then I do have one other ask, sorry. On attachment C, the Guidelines for Public Participation, in this document on page 24 or this portion, attachment, we have a second paragraph at every business meeting, time is set aside for public comments at the end of the meeting to encourage public participation. That's not what we're doing today. So.
Well, we are, we are.
Well, we are, but we're also, so my, my question is, you know, if we're looking at the handbook and, and the, the public participation, there are some systems that put it at the very front. The MSDE puts it at the very front. There are other systems that have, have it at the very end. And if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, there are some that have it in the middle. So I'm just, just so we, I mean, if we're going to, if we want to go to one fuller public participation, then I think we need to identify where does that occur in the meeting. If we want to stay with two, then I think we need to list it as there, there, at every business meeting, which is what this is, we should have time is set aside for public comments twice to be.
Or you could always say a minimum of one at the end of the board meeting.
I, I have a suggestion. I suggest that we have time at the beginning of board meetings for people who want to speak about agenda items because.
We do.
But at the very beginning of a, of a meeting, because they see the agenda and if they want to speak about an agenda item. And then time at the end of the meeting for people to speak about non-agenda items at the very end of the meeting.
Well, what if, oh.
Well, that's why we put, I'm just gonna go back to why we put the two public comments when we did. We put it very close to the beginning of the meeting itself for that very reason, in case people had comments that they wanted to, to make about any kind of agenda item. And it's, it's, it's one of the first things prior to even getting into our agenda.
Yeah, well, I think we should keep that there then.
So that's already there and it's at the beginning. And that was purposely placed at that strategic part of our agenda.
Yeah, you have to have a time.
And then we kept it at the end in case there were other comments that needed to be made at the end as well. So what we could do to go back to your comment is we could say a minimum of. And that way, if there was ever a situation where you wanted to remove it for whatever reason. where you wanted to remove it for whatever reason, you'd still have that option. Because you're only required, well, we're not required to have public comment at all. But, but having at least one public comment, I think, is, is, is fine.
I would ask the other board members for.
I agree to have some, I'm fine with two. I agree that we have to have one early on because I think it's unfair to make the public wait until the end to make a comment. Is like I, and I've said this before and I'm going to repeat it. The optics could be that, you know, we're trying to wait somebody out. We don't want what they have to say to be heard. And so I don't, so, but I also think having one at the end of the meeting has value if something happens in between the first comment section. And then so that, you know, that somebody feels compelled to speak about. Or they thought somebody was going to make their point earlier and didn't. So they've got to come up, so.
I agree.
I'm fine with, I support keeping it the way it is.
Are we, are we okay with the verbiage that Dr. Couch mentioned?
Minimum of one?
Well.
Or just leave it at the end?
I just leave.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should say minimum of one because somebody could say, well, we did the, we met the letter of the law. We did the minimum of one, you know? And then who is the arbiter that decides? Well, you know what, some meetings require it to. I mean, you know, we, it leads it open for inconsistency or just somebody manipulating an agenda for their own agenda. I mean, most times, people don't say anything at the end. We give them the opportunity, but most times they're, you know, heck, we've been here for three hours now, you know? And that's a darn long meeting. So most people have gone home by then.
Rachel.
Oh, it isn't printed on the back?
Ms. Solomon?
Yeah. I was going to say that we, something that might help community members that want to come and speak is if we actually, when we come back from closed session, do public comment immediately so that they can know that at 6:30, that's when the public comment time is going to be. And then we go into the remainder of our agenda. And then we also have the public comment at the end for anyone that wants to speak to anything that was discussed during the meeting. But that way, we know that, people will know that if they come here at 6:30 and they want to speak, that they can speak right at the beginning of the meeting.
That's a good idea.
I like that idea. I think we should have two times, just, just like that.
All right, so let me work on that part. And I will bring it back.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, is policy BBF, ethics policy?
Right. So we've already pretty much talked about that. Received a memo from the State Ethics Commission noting that there were some changes based on legislature that we had to, the legislature made changes that have to be in place in all of our ethics policy. The initial memo that I received from the state commission was that there were many school boards that had not had their policies approved by the State Ethics Commission. And Kent County was one of the ones that had ours approved. We had just submitted it. It hadn't been that long ago. So these changes are approved. And they've already gone through and approved the changes. They will be on the April meeting. And we should know by the next board meeting that the commission has approved this.
Okay.
So there should be no reason why it can't be approved by the board.
So then the intention, just so I'm clear, the intention will be then to revisit this policy BBF as it is stated, it's only, its item is for information only. And then potentially bringing it into the Board of Ed handbook?
Right. Technically, you may want to wait until we approve the ethics policy and then bring back the handbook. So I may just go ahead and hold out the handbook for one more month.
And that might give somebody an opportunity to go through it again, just to see if there's anything.
Okay. Very good. Any, any additional questions on the ethics policy for Dr. Couch? Okay, that was for information only. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Ms. Manley, do we have? Just a reminder, the rules for public participation. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comments and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or processed through available channels. If submitting written testimony, speakers are requested to provide a copy to the president. Please remember that this is an opportunity for the community to address their comments to the board. It is not an opportunity for dialogue. If you have any questions that need to be answered, please, please contact the superintendent or write a letter to the Board of Education and a response will be sent back to you. I have Ms. Reed, Barb Reed.
I got a chance to explain this flag. Little U.S. history, but Frank Rhodes brought up the Constitution. This is my First Amendment right. So I'll start, not with a prayer this time, with an apology. I'm sorry, the interruption caught me off guard. I was prepared for three minutes. I sometimes digress and I sometimes curse. My apologies publicly too. A quote I'd like to share, "People will notice the change in your attitude towards them, but they won't always notice their behavior that made the change." That's from an author, Toni Reeves. "I noticed other people tonight were allowed to talk about a recent statement released by Superintendent Couch where she was emotionally pleading for adults to resolve problems at a level of mutual satisfaction." Like she and Mr. Dale Brown, who I met for the first time tonight and it doesn't seem like that matter has been respectfully resolved to both of their satisfaction. But as I mentioned, dialogue, like I felt like I was being cut off tonight. And I brought this flag because I can't help the color of my skin. And that was brought up by some of your teachers. And I've shared this with you guys. But a nationalist, I'm still scratching my head. So I've recently been teaching my sons. And I raised a sailor, so he gets it honestly when he curses. But this is the first commissioned flag by our founding father, George Washington. Because when government fails, some of us appeal to a higher power. Some people are flying their American flags upside down right now because it's a country in distress. People lie, people just laugh. But anyways, some of your teachers, and I didn't name them. I'm, I've got my big girl panties on. But they're saying that attacks on public education from conservative evangelic Christians and people who pretend to be, I'm not going to pretend I am. I just swore tonight and I'll have to repent. But I could find John 3:16 in a Bible if you ask me to. So an author that they wanted to highlight claims that for 60 years, since the 50s, when these then racist parents formed private schools through their churches to protect their precious white children from having to sit in a classroom or play on a sports team with darker-skinned children. They're saying, we're not willing to pay for those private schools now. So we want to get ourselves up on this board and change, conform entire school systems to our narrow ways of seeing the world. I mean, this is pretty belittling. Like Dr. Couch is, she just said that as a previous educator, that she was offended. And as a community member, you find it disheartening and you don't want teachers treated in a disgraceful manner. Well, nor do I want parents.
Ms. Reed, we have 30 seconds.
Sure, you can have all the time you want. But I'd like to see you guys be accountable. I've raised two adult sons. And you know what you taught their mother? That when I speak up here, you go after them. Do you think you're going to get their kids if they have kids here in Kent County? Hell, no. And I'll be reading to them, Dr. Couch, and taking them on field trips where they can't even read signs that are in cursive. You guys have failed.
The next item on the agenda is the notification of the next meeting. The next meeting will be Thursday, April 28 at 6:00 p.m. That will be a budget hearing. The following meeting will be held on Monday, May 9, 2022. The Thursday, April 28 meeting will begin at 6:00 p.m. The May 9, Monday, May 9 meeting will begin at 5:30 p.m. with open session. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at 6:30 p.m. Both meetings will be located here at the administrative building in this boardroom at 5608 Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland 21661. The last item on the agenda is that the administration is recommending approval to adjourn this meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Do you want to make a mention of the celebration, whatever we're calling it, for Teacher of the Year and support staff?